So I think we want to push this just a couple of minutes if you guys want to wait.
Okay. Okay, while we're here, anybody know any good jokes?
No.
Yes, it's C O L O, no, C O Y, open, city, you can't, open, something. So it'll be the landowners within the freeway corridor specific plan.
Yeah.
Make sure you tighten that up and say, oh, love that.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I think the first one, if we don't go, it'll kill the second one. Cause they need the first one to go for the zoning. So if they don't get the first one, the second one is never material.
Oh, you mean the second item or?
Huh? Yeah, the second item.
No, the second item is a housing development.
Right, okay, the third item is.
The third item is a safety update, they're all independent.
Yeah, that's the one out there off of Live Oak or um pumpkin patchers and everything.
That's, that's item one. Item two is a hundred and twenty-seven houses on Twelfth and E.
Right.
And item three is a safety, city safety update.
Oh, okay, okay.
They're all independent.
Yeah, okay. Ben, are you ready? Oh, okay.
Yep, we are ready.
I guess he ain't coming down, huh?
Was this Tony, Tony, I think you need to officially recue the non-.
So we do need to go through the point of order, a call of order, pledge allegiance, and then in the roll call, uh, we'll have an announcement to make.
Okay, well, let's get started. So everybody out there in the audience, if you have a cell phone, please put it on silent or turn it off. And if you have any questions or anything you want to do, there's slip, take it down, this beautiful young lady to my left, and just give it to her and we'll get it. Okay? With that. Okay, go ahead. Lyle, last one in.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marie, can we get a roll call?
Chair Al Gower.
Here.
Vice Chair Hicks.
Uh, to the chair and to the commission, uh, have received a paper that, uh, Tony Hicks, uh, has resigned his position as a Utauba City Planning Commissioner.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Chester.
Here.
Commissioner Hagenson.
Here.
Commissioner Snodgrass.
Here.
And Commissioner Vick.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Uh, we have one public comment, speaker slip.
Dr. Hanson Wong.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, thank you for allowing me to speak. Just a couple of general comments.
I really think that you have your families, your work, and sometimes with four hundred to seven hundred pages of information, that you need more time. So I would make the same recommendation that I made to the city council, that you be presented your information a week ahead, so that you have time to review it and make appropriate decisions, rather than at the last minute and things happen. Uh, second item is that I noticed on, uh, the recommendations, it gives the yay, nay, and, um, possible mo- modifications. You've got to remember, you can make modifications, it's not always a yes or a no. And if you need time, if you need information, we are required, um, in order to take care of things for the owners in a timely fashion. But, uh, making sure that we do that, you do also have the right to ask for additional information, and so that you make appropriate decisions to benefit the city. The, there's timelines that we have to follow and that, so we will, I think we should follow it. The general plan and, uh, bonus densities are just something that we should give to the landowners. Anything above and over that, we should have a rational reason for it. In addition, I think we should negotiate something back, uh, for giving, uh, the additional benefits to the landowners and developers. We need to evaluate the needs for, um, senior housing as well as affordable housing, because again, if, uh, there's reasons that people want to utilize those, but again, is, do we have adequate reasons and adequate demand for those areas in order for us to, uh, tailor the city's, uh, needs to an appropriate way of doing things? And so, and the specific plan is a recommendation and some mandates. And that some of this was for decade or years ago, and if they make modifications or changes to it, that, um, you as the current commissioners should think about what is beneficial and what we should not have at this time. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. That said, Ben. Okay, so we'll go right into item number one, is the freeway corridor specific plan.
Thank you all, Chairman, and Plan Commissioners. Um, before you guys tonight is the freeway corridor specific plan update, as well as a specific oats, uh, commerce center, um, projects. So at high level, um, what is the specific plan, um, per the off, Governor's Office of Plan Research? It is to help implement the general plan, and then as part of the overall general plan, it's ineffective if it's not well implemented. So using specific plans, other tools, is to help elevate the policies that are listed, the long-term vision, and make sure that we're creating pathways to ensure that what the vision is that was established by the general plan is able to be carried forward, uh, with that. And so it provides a lot of the details of how a project ends up being built, or different projects, and is especially useful for larger areas. Um, kind of addressing phasing opportunities and challenges, and making sure that as development occurs within an area, it's kind of tailored to that area, as well as kind of addressing some of the, the issues that would happen with a kind of more patchwork type of development approach under just a standard zoning code. And so, as we sit here tonight, the city of Utauba does have an existing specific plan for the freeway corridor area. Um, as part of it, this kind of shows the land use kind of breakdown, uh, of the different areas. It has kind of the commercial, um, business park, um, the, the water district properties, and then a number of, uh, residential capacities at twenty-four, forty-five dwelling units. And so, kind of a background of the entire area, um, the freeway corridor has always been identified by the city, um, as a area for future commercial and residential development. Um, both in nineteen ninety-two, as well the two thousand and four general plan update, had included, you know, capitalize on commercial and development, industrial opportunities along I-ten freeway, balance the demands of commercial development. Um, and then certainly, the freeway corridor itself began in two thousand and five, where city council directed the preparation of the freeway corridor specific plan. From there, the land use approach, or kind of general sense of what should be done with the freeway corridor, was then reviewed by the city council in two thousand and six, and they directed to move forward with the preparation of the environmental document, um, for that type of specific plan. And then the Plan Commission reviewed it then. Meanwhile, um, as we are all familiar with, um, housing law requires, um, cities to have adopted housing element, and it's driven by what's called the regional housing needs assessment. During this time, the city received a pretty hefty, um, at that time, not compared to what we have now, pretty hefty RINA requirement. And so, in order to kind of balance out those housing sites, um, the city council then directed the freeway corridor to be updated to help provide some of those housing sites and meet those then re-RINA requirements. And then ultimately, the freeway corridor specific plan as it's current, currently laid out, was approved in two thousand and eight, which included the R twenty-four areas, which is the high-density residential for affordable housing, and then also provided that greater emphasis on housing, commercial and industrial use as a part of the plan. And so that was approved in November of that year. But after that time period happened, um, a lot of things happened in the world that kind of changed how the market works in terms of what people can afford, um, and as well as the commercial sector, and how people spend their money on either housing and commerce. And so, definitely, a, a number of different factors kind of changed what the world was like when the specific plan was being developed in the first place, and kind of where it is now. And, um, ultimately, during this kind of transition of the market, the city council, uh, reviewed our comprehensive general plan, adopted it in twenty sixteen, and had a multi-year effort through, um, through the general plan, identifying that the freeway corridor specific plan is a key area, and additional flexibility is needed in, in order for it to actually materialize. And so, city council then really kind of prioritized, um, that, um, the freeway corridor continued to move forward, and also directed staff to seek, um, uh, grant funding to help facilitate that update and make sure that it's able to actually materialize. And then in two thousand and eleven, um, study sessions were identified for the freeway corridor specific, uh, update, because we did receive grant funding, kind of their key uses and goals for the area. One of the things that also happened concurrently was the city's housing element for the current housing cycle. Also, reiterate that the freeway corridor is an important strategy for the current regional housing needs assessment, as well as those into future housing cycles. And so making sure that we're able to claim credit to the zone capacity that's already there. So the twenty-four hundred units is there, we want to make sure that we're able to actually get credit for it when we're looking at the, the housing element process. And so really, this, this freeway corridor specific plan is brought to you guys and was directed by city council. First and foremost is to address the changes in market demand, how people spend their money, how commerce works, how, um, the cost of housing has changed, and what consumer preferences are, is baking in a lot more flexibility to make sure that's able to capture that and realize the potential that was already established by city council. And then also some issues that were kind of identified was, um, um, kind inconsistent provisions of, of implementation. So in the freeway corridor, we have our business park and regional commercial uses. They're meant to do two different things, but the use tables are the same, and so you may get warehouses where you want commerce, you may get commerce where you want something else, and it wasn't very clear. And then the other component was identified open space as being all natural, but that included areas that were already under, uh, agriculture uses grazing or had prirating. It was not natural, it was modified in some degree. And so providing a better clarity on what is meant to be protected, as well as what is meant to be more of the green belt, was a key priority. And then certainly some, um, uh, changes to, um, the area. So one of the projects that has been, uh, is under construction right now is the Brookfield Warehouse. It's an example of the RC, the regional commercial, where it has industrial use. It is under the existing plan, a use that could be allowed, um, but it may not be the intent. So some of the key corridors that we want to have kind of more retail uses, maybe we don't want to have for, um, for warehouses. And then also the component was the, the pumpkin patch, and their conditioning use permit is, uh, really was a goal to help allow and facilitate the continued use of the patch and their, um, evolution as it may occur, as well as address some of the impact. So, uh, I'll cover that in a subsequent slide, but a lot of the infrastructure was meant to go through the pumpkin patch, which would have meant that the pumpkin patch shouldn't exist in its form for the specific plan to actually be built. And so this is then example of that. This is the main corridor roadway, going through the pumpkin patch, through where pumpkins are planted and other events. And so, we want to make sure that we're able to accommodate what infrastructure needs are for all the other parcels without necessarily endangering, um, the operations that are in place currently and certainly, uh, well revered by, by the community at large. And then, uh, kind of as another component is, again, the general plan, going back into it. The general plan itself, um, includes two specific goal sections. So this is one of the only components, I think, in the general plan that is called out separately in two different spots, saying we want to make sure that the freeway corridor gets built and provides an economic hub. And so it's under both the land use, as well as, uh, economic development, really providing support for goals for commerce, housing variety towards some other uses. And then certainly, the other component that is really a, a key feature is the city's housing element. Identified one that we will do some tweaks to the freeway corridor to make it more viable. Um, one of the challenges that has been created through state law is, if you have a housing element site identified in your housing element for a couple of cycles, if it doesn't have any action that goes with it, the state says, alright, then it's no longer valid and you can't claim it. So, we don't necessarily get to downzone the property, because the property owner will still want their land use rights that they have for that residential capacity, but now we have to make up that shortfall elsewhere. And so essentially, the twenty-four hundred units that are in the freeway corridor, we essentially would have to make up elsewhere in the community, or we do the, the changes that make it more viable. So then in that case, when it goes through the analysis with the state, we can demonstrate that, hey, it used to be a site, but we've reconfigured a lot of the standards to make it much more viable, and then it's able to move forward. And then at the end of the day, one thing is, is to leverage with update, it's always been seen as a hub for commerce and residential growth, but because it really hasn't developed in that way, it's been ineffective to achieve that. So as noted, kind of in what is the purpose of the general plan, specific plans is, it's meant to be implemented. If you have goals and you're not able to achieve them, then something is obviously not creating the tool that you need to, to get there. And so the update is meant to help, um, address some of those deficiencies and move us forward, um, for that. And so a lot of it is the high-level goals and policies that were in the specific plan before are retained. So we're not necessarily revolutionizing how the plan is, but really just evolving it to based on, um, both the market conditions and provide that flexibility moving forward. And also some input that we did, so we did do surveys with a number, or with all the property owners within the specific plan, and some of the areas where they identified, hey, this is a challenge with existing plan and what we've run into when we've talked about developing the property. We tried to address that with update. And the last component is, you know, certainly the fiscal sustainability. Um, the city itself, based on kind of the overall budget and the, the, the costs of, of services, including public safety, has increased a lot, but the commercial activity growth has not. And so the development that has not really kept pace with infrastructure investments. And so making sure that we have a plan in place that can help facilitate that, that transition in a way that makes sense, and provide, you know, funding opportunities for, um, for key elements that the community needs, um, is also a key feature. And so this is the existing land use plan, and then kind of the proposed layout, um, kind of showing that. So there, I'm gonna go over the land use districts, I do want to note as well, there's a handy QR code, um, telling that has a slider between the two different maps. Um, my staff did a great job, Matty did a great job creating that, um, just as a visual representation of kind of the, the unique themes. Um, but we'll kind of cover the, the differences, is really the change in residential units is by zone capacity of twenty-five units. So it really is more of a mapping of the different land use boundaries, the different districts, the acreages, and what that transition is. So it really was meant to kind of allow the same level of intensity, um, but not necessarily increase it and create problems for the community at large. Uh, the non-residential, uh, square footage did increase by five thou- uh, five hundred thousand square feet. However, based on the transition, so we leverage the, the, the commercial activity, the retail opportunities, but based on how the markets change, and some of the different uses, it actually, uh, provides a reduction of what would have been, um, uh, eighty-one thousand trips a day from what the existing plan would have at build-out versus what the proposed changes actually accomplish. And so the residential components itself, um, kind of follows the same level, so we aren't necessarily having more density. Um, the, the highest density kind of land use is still the R twenty-four. And then what really is kind of the big change is we have removed the R one and gone to R two, but then we've introduced the R twelve. And so this is really a more mid-density kind of option, kind of the smaller, single-family lot, uh, product types that have been successfully, um, built in the city already, and kind of where the, the first-time home buyers, uh, it kind of meets that price point as well. And then kind of reconfigured for better availability of land, and more importantly, relocating some of the areas for housing that was in washes or stuff that would be very expensive and create a lot of biological impacts to build. While feasible, we tried to reconfigure it so that we could avoid that and make it a lot more easier for development to occur, but also not have as many, uh, impacts to, um, our natural resources than what is currently in the plan. And then we have kind of the, the non-residential districts. So the first two is the open space. So as I noted before, the existing freeway corridor had open space as kind of everywhere. Um, and it's supposed to be natural, but it isn't actually natural in the, in the real world. And so we've created instead two different designations. One is open space, which is the green belt, allows for the continued agricultural grazing in land securitizations, provides opportunities for multipurpose trails, and allowing all that to interact. But then more importantly, we've established an open space conservation. So this is really the areas where it's protected, this is where the higher biological resources are, or the jurisdictional waters, where we really probably don't want to see that being impacted by development. And so prioritizes that distinction, so that the areas that should be protected are protected, and the areas that maybe are meant to provide green space within the community are also still provided too. And then one of the other changes is the introd- introduction of the agro- agricultural tourism, um, district, which is really, um, related to the existing pumpkin patch, their current operations, and, um, allows flexibility into the future of different types of activities that they may want to do. Um, and provides a path to make sure that that operation is able to be, one, fiscally sustainable for them, but also, um, allows the flexibility that as, you know, customer preferences change, they're able to adjust and adapt, um, to that, and make sure that it's a viable operation into the future. And then certainly, the regional commercial, as I mentioned before, this was really set up to be focused on retail and shopping-based uses. And so the standards are much more specific to encourage those type of uses. Whereas the business park is more focused on the business, office, and warehouse uses. And so the land use classifications are a bit more distinguished, so then that way you don't have warehousing where you don't want necessarily that to be used for that, and provides a lot more clarity, um, for everyone on moving forward. And so, again, kind of industrial uses, commercial industrial has always been planned for the area. However, because of that lack of distinction, you may have warehouses where you didn't necessarily want them. And so the solution with this kind of approach is that the larger kind of warehouse structures are limited to areas that are more tucked away. So you're not necessarily looking at a bunch of dot doors from the freeway, it's more obscured. And then areas with the prime freeway exposures are the areas that a bid-bought retailer or something like that would actually look at, or other businesses where they want to be able to market, those areas are protected for those particular uses, and you don't have an intermittent that is currently allowed in the existing freeway corridor. And then certainly, as part of the, the circulation, provides kind of roadway network throughout, um, including traffic for, um, the tra- traffic and, as well as residences and the connectivity throughout. Um, again, one of the key components is it does remove the collector street from the pumpkin patch and moves it further south. And then that way, the pumpkin patch doesn't have to build a road through their pumpkin, um, farming activity. And then one thing I do want to note as well, as part of the traffic analysis, we do, we did provide a level service analysis, uh, with the plan. Um, and this was actually conducted during the pumpkin patch season. So we did the traffic counts, not when the pumpkin patch is hiding and having this big thing in October that's going to create a bunch more traffic. They actually did the accounts during that peak season, so we wanted to make sure that if the pumpkin patch is, is operating at full capacity and other activities happening, will there be enough circulation flow that people aren't stuck and dreadlocked throughout the community? And so that was able to be accomplished with some of the design recommendations that are included within the specific plan. Now, one other thing that's, I think, important to note, um, as part of the, the project, is it does include a general plan amendment, which is to rezone the site, um, plan development for the freeway corridor, and then institutional for the water district, it's not a par- parcel. Um, this is really, I think, more a cleanup item, and where, uh, staff, um, intends to bring further cleanup items. The freeway corridor, if you kind of look in the land use map here, is the only specific plan that has its land use boundaries mapped on the general plan map. No other specific plans has it. The general plan also references that Uptown is mapped that way, and that is not true either. And so, rather than having kind of these districts where a resident goes to the city's map, puts on it and goes, hey, where's the standards for regional commercial? I don't see it in the development code. We flag it as, okay, this is a plan development, so they know, okay, there's unique standards for the site, and then they're able to get the freeway corridor. And so, um, uh, staff intends to provide similar kind of updates. So then that way, what you see as a resident looking for zoning questions, you get flagged instantly on where you're supposed to be going versus trying to figure it out on, on stuff where it doesn't have direct links to the development code. And then, um, as part of the freeway corridor, um, specific plan, uh, it does include, um, you know, again, uh, the specific plan itself is listed in two different segments, and specific goals with their own set of policies for implementation. The housing element also includes strategies that rely on the freeway corridor specific plan. And so in the draft findings of approval, um, for the freeway corridor, uh, adoption, there's over at least sixty policies of the general plan that are met by the proposed update. So it's, when you go through, there's a lot of, of alignment with those general plan policies. Again, it's always been planned for housing and economic activity, and so making sure that those elements are able to be fulfilled by the standards that are in place with the freeway corridor specific plan. Um, and then, kind of the unique component with this project is, not only do we have a specific plan, but we actually have an individual project too, which is Pacific Oaks Commerce Center. This is on a three hundred and twelve acre site. Um, as part of their development, they proposed to keep ninety-five acres of that as, uh, open space, sixty-one acres for, uh, residential zone pad. Includes two different buildings, which are just slightly over a million square feet, and then includes also a twenty-nine acre area for additional truck parking, kind of shown here. Um, both buildings are, um, are kind of as the access, it will be connecting off Live Oak Canyon Road. A lot of queuing capacity for their, um, their, their, uh, tenants and the operations within this roadway and within the site as well. It does allow the roadway to connect to the future Wildwood Canyon, uh, interchange project whenever that moves forward, which is also currently in the environmental review page. And then it also provides a signal down at Live Oak Canyon to facilitate the traffic. And then there'll be roadway widening along Live Oak Canyon as well, um, to help facilitate the, the ingress and egress, um, throughout the area. And then, kind of the unique thing about this project, so as I mentioned, um, you know, one of the updates was kind of focusing on industrial uses and trying not to have them be, you know, seeing a bunch of dot doors from the freeway, is the site grading is designed to be balanced, where they're not importing or exporting dirt from the site, and really using the terrain to help hide the, the structures from kind of key vantage points. So when this update went to, uh, one of the study sessions with city council was, hey, we're fine with the industrial uses, but we really don't want to be just looking at a bunch of trucks parked. We did kind of a line of sight analysis, the applicant's team did, uh, a video that they'll present in their, um, presentation. But this kind of shows the line of sight, so the green shows where their property boundaries are. And if you notice, you can't see any tops of warehouse buildings. And so it's meant to really be, if you're driving through Utauba, passing through, you're looking at the pumpkin patch, you're not seeing a big warehouse right in that view. And so the buildings themselves, um, are kind of similar, um, similar dot doors and kind of arrangement, and then access, and they are designed, um, they are speculative buildings, but they're designed to accommodate a number of, uh, quality tenants in it, and so allows a lot of flexibility in their site design, um, to meet those needs and, you know, demands of the future. And then this is architecture review, they did go with a, uh, kind of, uh, you know, clean, simple, um, uh, farmhouse style aesthetic. A lot of variation in both, uh, the materials, colors, and then building articulation. So even though it's not necessarily going to be visible from the freeway in all those vantage points, it's still not an utterly building either. It has attention to detail throughout, um, as part of that expectation with the freeway corridor. And then kind of lastly, I want to talk about the environmental review of this. So, uh, uh, subsequent environmental impact report was prepared, which addresses the certified EIR for the original freeway corridor specific plan, so what was approved already, what can be built, um, and the update, and so it compares the differences between the two. And then there was a number of kind of activities. So the environmental review started in November of two thousand and twenty-two and had a scoping meeting, so opportunities for public comment at both those opportunities. And then the draft SEIR was available for review in February through March of this year. And then the final response to comments were provided on May twenty-fourth of this year. And with that analysis, a number of technical studies were done, a variety of them were done for the entire specific plan area. You know, kind of globally, but then also a number of technical studies were done specifically for the Pacific Oaks project and making sure that they meet those requirements as well, including the water quality management plan for their development. And kind of key environmental takeaways, and this is going to be similar to to what the plan commission has seen before. Air quality and greenhouse gases do remain significantly unavoidable. So with the existing freeway corridor, this was the outcome that was in place then. Certainly just having development of of a large master plan creates that threshold. It sees that threshold. There really isn't a good way to get out of that. And then noise impacts are also significantly unavoidable because this is next to the I-ten freeway. And you can't really mitigate for noises created by the cumulative impact of the freeway and new development that you can't, you can't feasibly address mitigation on Caltrans land because we don't have the jurisdiction over that. But the rest of the impacts are lost in city media and in many cases are improved compared to what the existing freeway corridor specific plan has. Now, we did receive a few different public comments that have been distributed to everyone. The first one is from the Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance. They included their original comment letter on the SEIR, which in which we did provide responsive comments as part of the final EIR. And they also referenced just concerns as they use the Cal and BioStream tool. This is a tool that cities and other agencies use, especially for grants. And this analysis was also included in the final EIR and then the or in the EIR itself. And then the response to comment zero one dash two specifically addresses a Cal and BioStream components and reaffirms that this was used and appropriately determined through that analysis. Another public comment was received by Robinson Ranch, which is one of the property owners. So they identified kind of primarily just concerns over loss of regional commercial. Kind of the bid changes was related to the pumpkin patch and the add tourism. So so commerce activity and retail and other kind of commercial activity can still continue to remain and support the pumpkin patch. And then the other area where you see the loss of regional commercial is where the existing warehouse building is under construction. That becomes business park just to help provide that consistency between warehouse uses and then general kind of retail and and customer-focused, you know, spots where people go. And then, you know, you know, the regional commercial areas specifically for Robinson Ranch have been enhanced. A lot of the feedback that they had provided initially was, you know, when you get off the freeway, the right-hand corner and access is, you know, the most kind of valuable piece because that's the spot that people can see before they're approaching the intersection and get off. And it's easy to get in and out. So it's a high-value kind of commercial site. And so all those locations that apply to that property, the regional commercial area has been enhanced or enlarged to to facilitate that. So it's actually improved from that. Another comment that they provided was in regards to whether or not the changes were in violation of Sheets versus Eldorado. This was a Supreme Court decision related to development impact fees. So it does not impact related to land use plans or anything of that sort. And then some questions on the EIFD. And so that is enhanced infrastructure finance district. It's a tool to help use tax increment financing for new development. It doesn't specify what the infrastructure is or what the capacities need to be. It's just more of as development occurs, we get additional property tax revenues and we can use that to help fund future infrastructure improvements. And so there's no changes there. And then there was also a comment that the specific plan proposes to transfer land or zoning capacity to South Mountain, which I refer to as the City of Redlands. That's not the case. Their area remains pretty much the same. And then the Robinson Ranch itself gains more housing than what they currently have zoned for. And then, as I mentioned, the retail areas for those right-hand corners are also enhanced as well. We received a public comment early or kind of lunchtime or so requesting certain modifications. One was a removal of the development agreement requirement from the administrative use permit. They want a change to the amusement ride distinction. It currently is referenced in the land use table as those that require state approval to those that are over forty-five feet that trigger, that would then trigger the conditional use permit. This was something that I think as we were working through some of the rides, thought there was a distinction between a certain level of rides and whether or not they would trigger state review. Apparently they all do. And so it's just more kind of the larger rides having a little bit more discretion on that. Some clarity on that ad uses are allowed in the open space district. Page three dash seven of specific plan already notes this. And then they wanted some clarity on the administrative use requirements. It's a kind of a site plan review, similar to our land use compliance review. It's more focused on the functionality of the site design, making sure everything flows together. And then want to note as well that in a prior discussion yesterday, they had also noted requesting clarification that the add tourism term provides that it's specific to the plan, that there may be other agricultural tourism definitions used either by the state or county. They want to make sure that it's not tied to those definitions. It's specifically tied to what's in the plan. And so that's certainly fine as well. And so kind of the end part is the errata sheet covers the text changes and updates on the public hearing draft that's available for public review. And it's to address kind of all those little tweaks that may be necessary, including those that come from the planning commission tonight. And then we did identify that want to add in into the implementation, the requirement for architecture review, going to planning commission, making sure that that's clear. Just any textual changes that may result from tonight or typos that are immaterial to the actual document, but just making sure that we do one final flush. And then those those points raised by the pumpkin patch in the prior sheet to help add some additional clarity that was requested. And so tonight, this is a decision that's ultimately decided by the city council. You guys are just providing your input and recommendation one way or another. Do want to note again that there's already adopted freeway corridor specific plan. So the changes are less on, do we want to have, you know, the twenty-four hundred units and all that stuff because that's already in place. It really is modifying the housing sites and locations so that we can qualify for future housing elements and get credit for the freeway corridor. Providing that distinction between regional commercial and business park so that the prime retail areas with the freeway views are much more focused on commerce activities where customers will be going rather than maybe uses that just kind of has a bunch of trucks parked. And then certainly the last component is kind of update the infrastructure layout and provide flexibility for the pumpkin patch to make sure that they're able to be protected. Don't have to build on on that for the infrastructure. And then add a little bit additional flexibility so that if the market does change in the future, there's ways to to make sure that the plan doesn't become stagnant with it. And then certainly if there's any kind of larger scale requests that come about from future property owners, then they'll go through the standard specific plan amendment process at that time. But that's not not kind of contemplated. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
I want to know why there's a reduction of two point two eight million square feet of regional commercial and who's affected directly by this reduction?
So the reduction is related to some of the transition. So I mentioned the the regional commercial portion includes both the pumpkin patch site and as well as the portions to the the east end of the proper or project site, which is where the existing warehouse is being constructed. So it's reflecting those changes. And so it's reshifting some of the land for the business park. But then also the add tourism is a new distinction being added in as well and provides long-term sales stats and other revenue opportunities.
So the increase in two point seven nine million square feet of business park, the benefit's going to be the warehouse?
It would be, that would be the the key component, yes.
Okay. I want to know, in your traffic studies, did you guys take into accountability the staging of trucks around the city? You know that when you put a warehouse in, that there's different timeframes, that trucks go in and out and they'll be staged around the city. Say from like two to three X amount of trucks are going in and out. Did you guys account for that in your traffic study?
So the traffic study does address the operations based on the layout of the street that will be developed as well as the the infrastructure, the queuing capacity. There's room along those streets to help facilitate the truck traffic. They include the trailer parking spot as well to help address, make sure that people aren't parking in other spots where they're not supposed to. And then lastly, the traffic study did do what's called a passenger car equivalent. So recognizing that a truck moves more slowly than like Honda Civic, essentially accounts for it. So one truck may be three cars rather than just one vehicle. And so that was included as well.
Because we're looking at one thousand fifty-eight trucks. It's not just fifty or a hundred. It's a hun- it's one thousand and fifty-eight, right?
Yeah, I remember that that number on the the study.
That was the exact number on the study.
So the traffic study will also account for peak hour traffic. That's generally kind of the measure that we look at. So it might be a one thousand trucks over the total day. But the infrastructure will have to accommodate the peak hour traffic, which was when you would expect the most concentration of trucks. And so that's always looked at as part of the traffic study.
But typically within warehousing, it's completely throughout the day. So you're going to have a dock that's going to take three or four trucks. So you can't just look at peak hours. You have to look for the entirety of the day.
So I mean, the traffic impact analyses, the standard is to look at peak hour. And so that's that's based off of a national average of when the most trucks would be at a facility of this size. And so it has to accommodate that largest number. So every other hour throughout the day is going to have fewer trucks. And so if we're building to that largest number, then it accommodates any of the other time throughout the day.
What is that number for trucks? How many?
Let me look through the study and can find what that peak hour.
It's one thousand fifty-eight. That's the total truck. One seventy-eight docking bays, four hundred and ten trailer stalls and five hundred and fifteen auto stalls for a total of one thousand fifty-eight truck parking stalls. Are we waiting for an answer or?
Yeah, I think so. She looking up.
So I'm looking here where you're looking at the one thousand three. Is that the number you're looking at?
One thousand fifty-eight.
Okay, so I'm looking at table B where it talks about the trip generation. And then if you look at the high cube warehouse. So I see one thousand three on here on page seventeen. Okay, great.
Yeah, so we're confirming the numbers. I think the numbers you're providing are higher, but the traffic engineer is also available via phone. And so Sandy Pan, can you hear us?
Yeah, so the trip generation was conducted for the peak hours and also for the daily traffic. Typically in traffic analysis, we analyze the peak hours because that's when the traffic is highest. And the rationale is that if traffic operates at acceptable levels of service during the peak hours, the off-peak hours would also operate at satisfactory levels of service.
Okay.
Okay.
I I do have a question back to.
In in terms of in terms of the trip generation, the proposed project is anticipated to, so, okay, so also the other thing that we do in traffic analysis is we convert the trucks to equivalent passenger cars. What that, because trucks are slower to accelerate and decelerate at an intersection, depending on the type of truck, one truck, like a smaller truck, operates as one and a half cars, whereas the bigger semis can operate as up to three cars. So each truck takes up, you know, operationally behaves as if there are three cars. Now, the daily truck PCE trip generation is about, is what we are forecasting is about five thousand two hundred, which, so I don't have the exact, you know, raw truck numbers, but it would come to about two thousand trucks. On an average, it it ends up at about two point five PCE per truck. So we are, we would be at about about two thousand one hundred trucks total for the entire specific plan area.
What does that, so what?
Is that trips per day?
Yes.
Do you add in the residential? If they, you know, you got cars obviously there and we build out them residential projects. Again, there goes, there goes a lot more cars.
Yeah, so the freeway corridor, when we did the analysis, assessed the full build-out, so all the houses, all the commercial, all the business park being built out and assesses what the flow would be. And so the circulation has been designed so that the flow of traffic is still meets the city's general plan standards. And then more importantly, again, the comparison of number of trips, the daily activity is reduced from what would be built under the plan as it currently sits today.
Hey, Ben? Okay. On those two warehouses, what type of businesses for a million square foot, I mean, obviously it's probably going to be an Amazon warehouse or like a grocery distributor or do they have any clue? Because I can tell you, I I work at a lot of different warehouses and there's a huge difference on trucks coming in between grocery and Amazon, clothing.
Yep.
It's completely different.
Yeah, so as all of the applicants speak more to that, but as part of the analysis, it did kind of provide a conservative estimate of of the higher use. So I know like the the food in particular is like a pretty high level of activity. And so we made sure that we accounted for kind of those 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 uses. So we didn't take the traffic count and say, what's the lightest warehouse type of use and we'll use those numbers. We made sure that it was stacked to encapsulate that. They're designed as speculative warehouses, but the applicants maybe will provide a little bit more detail about what kind of tenants that they would solicit.
I have another question. If there's a new development agreement for the pumpkin patch, is there any language that is going to constrict them to do business as they feel free to do? Or is there restrictions set by the city?
For?
For their operations.
Yeah, because you went to agricultural, they, you took them from commercial to agricultural.
But in the development agreement, are there any restrictions that say they cannot do certain types of activities in this new conditional use permit?
So the development agreement has not been drafted or has not been like, it's not proposed tonight. And so and the pumpkin patch has requested that a development agreement not be required. A lot of times development agreements are set up to kind of set expectations that as development occurs, what the the mechanisms are and it provides flexibility moving forward on how things should should work, so.
But if you're trying to strip them of commercial zoning, then it does play a role in this. How their conditional use permit is worded definitely is pertinent to this meeting.
Yeah, so their conditional use permit is for a seasonal activity site, which is to the continuation of their uses. The add tourism includes provisions for flexibility for the growth of their site, whatever that case may be. So they bake it in and it allows avenues for whatever that may be in the future to accomplish that, provided that there's still a level of review consistent with any other property in the city of Yipah that proposes development.
So my question is, is there any restriction that the city is going to impose on them to restrict their operations in any manner?
To restrict their current operations?
Yes.
No, there's no provisions. Again, the existing freeway corridor proposes a roadway going through the pumpkin patch that they would need to build. And so this one does not.
So then we took the pumpkin patch corner that their property may get agricultural. And then we added that large commercial for the warehouses. But then is there anything that that the pumpkin patch is doing currently, business-wise, that is going to affect them? business-wise, that is gonna affect them with an agricultural zoning?
Nothing in this proposed update to the freeway corridor impacts how their operations work with their CUP.
If if nothing changes, what's the purpose of rezoning them?
Exactly.
To that, to rezone them is otherwise we're doing analysis for a project that won't be built. I mean, we're then heavy loading environmental review for a hypothetical that does not exist.
They exist currently under general commercial zoning, correct?
Um they, we have memorialized their operations and that's it.
They're currently zoned regional commercial though, correct? So the purpose of changing them to agricultural tourism, it's gonna pigeonhole them. It devalues their property. At the end of the day, everybody knows commercial property is valued more than agriculture.
So again, the, I do wanna clarify, the agricultural tourism is not a ag-only zoning district. It is allows for a variety of different uses as shown in the land use plan um for that. And so there isn't necessarily been any loss. If the pumpkin patch wants to abandon their operations and submit a proposal, there's still avenues for them to do that as well, consistent with amending the specific plan or whatever the case may be. But the, if there were continuous pumpkin patch and want to expand certain commercial activities related to that thing, then the freeway core specific plan update with ad tourism allows them to do it. Whereas the regional commercial does not have any such provisions that would allow for that to happen.
Well, they still have to go to you and ask for a new AU or a CUP to do different operations, correct?
If they expand, just like any other commercial property that wants to expand their operations, there's a site plan process review that's required. And so that applies to both the pumpkin patch, to city-owned properties, to anything else. There's always that process that is in place. People don't have carte blanche to just do whatever they want on the property and add a bunch of stretchers or something like that without some sort of review mechanism in place.
They do to add.
Go ahead.
Yeah, they do to add crops or a cart vendor or a concert or anything like that. So sure, structures um require permitting process, but the existing C CUP already includes certain structures allowable on the property. So the future development plan ex nays all that and makes them request permission for every event in future, no?
Uh.
Says amusement enterprise, including raising crops, building associated for agricultural crop processing, petting zoo for.
Yeah, so so a- again, the the ad tourism district is to help memorialize what they have and give them flexibility into the future. Um you know, in terms of running concerts, that's not part of their CUP. They don't have a grandfathered use with that under their CUP. Um you know, there are certain activities that that they had identified that they'll do, but there's not necessarily, i- it's not an unlimited amount of activity that they can just pop up in place without a separate process in place.
And you're saying the re- the rezoning was strictly on a environmental review process to avoid some kind of uh um extra work?
No, it it comes down to, we don't know what the pumpkin patch wants to do. They've done a CUP to continue their operations. They have expressed interest to be flexible on how they want to evolve that and meet their market demands. And so um if they wanna do, build a warehouse, then if they provide a project, we'll do the analysis for a warehouse.
It'd have to be rezoned, right?
Yeah.
So why can't we do agricultural commercial?
We can change the name, yeah, that's fine.
Where else does this zoning exist in town?
Nowhere.
Nowhere, the the pumpkin patch only exists on the pumpkin patch. We don't have anything else that's have this this type of use.
So there's no pre-existing condition in this city that would kind of dictate, I mean, give them the crystal ball of what they're expecting. It's basically a a touch-and-go process for zoning in their future cause they don't know uh what is and what isn't currently.
We try to building as much flexibility for whatever direction they may want to go.
But then how do we know that their operations aren't gonna be pigeonholed through this new land zoning? How do we know that?
So again, the land use table provides a list of different uses. The administrative use permit again is equivalent to our land use compliance review. So it's administrative site plan review. It's not a decision on, hey, this is a bad activity you guys are gonna do or something like that. Or the the answer would be no, it streamlines all those provisions. Um but it doesn't relegate them to any particular outcome because they don't know what that case may be, and we don't know what that case is either. And so it builds in flexibility to assess those as once they know what what it is.
But the intent of the FSCP is to allow agricultural uses, AKA pumpkin growing, in the open space land use area. But these uses are not outlined in the permitted uses, correct? It's not outlined in the table.
For the ag uses?
Correct.
So again, this goes back to my comment letter. Um the response is, it's identified on page three dash seven of the specific plan. Already notes that the ag uses are allowed within the open space district. So we can add that additional clarity there too, but it is already specified in the specific plan. And so again, it's also not limited to pumpkin growing. It could be a vineyard, it could be a falfa sprouts, it could be a variety of other stuff too uh on it. And so the specific plan calls out for the ad tourism, but that's already in place.
I just don't think a business should be at the mercy of government to ask for operational use.
The, how do we protect them from state and county definitions of agritourism? Because if they're rescinded into fifty percent agriculture, um it effectively, especially with you guys committing eight acres of their property to um conservancy now, that uh it'll relegate them to a tiny square and reduce their operation.
Um.
If you went fifty percent ag on the property, it's sixty-four acres. Um it'd reduce them to thirty-two, and they're currently operating at fifty. So to protect them from definitions, county and state.
Yeah, so that that again goes back to representative had also noted um some clarity on that term um that it's not tied to any state or county specific terms, and so that's fine.
I guess I just don't understand the the intent of rezoning them to something that doesn't exist in this city without some kind of intent to change the current operation.
And devalue their property. It devalues their property by changing their zoning to agricultural, agricultural tourism. It devalues their property. Am I wrong?
I I I'm not a appraiser, I don't necessarily agree with that sentiment because they can still do other uses. Um I mean, th- there's a wide open variety that they can do with it. If the the consternation is simply on agricultural tourism and if it's agricultural, commercial agriculture or something like that. Uh i- if there's another terminology that'd be better, that's certainly fine. But um you know, again, under the existing freeway core specific plan, none of the, even if they wanted to do a commercial use, it's not spelt out specifically that they can just do it. I mean, that's not the case. And so um I think we're deluding ourselves a little bit. If the idea is, hey, now we're we're taking this this flexibility that they could do, um that flexibility is still there. The review process would still be almost virtually the same. And so if someone wants to come in and do, abandon the pumpkin patch and do something totally different, which from our input that we've received from the pumpkin patch is not something they're going to do, you know, they're not looking to sh- you know, close up shop tomorrow, is okay, then we're gonna allow the continued growth of that use and provide the flexibility and make sure that it's easy for them to do it. And if they wanna go a total one eighty, then there's still a way to do that too.
Then why take away their commercial zoning? And is it the city's intent to ever limit their operations in any manner? Is there any intention for that?
To limit their operations?
Mm-hmm.
So again, the city has police powers for the health, safety, and welfare of that. And so a- again, no property anywhere in the city has carte blanche to just do whatever. So if we're speaking hypothetically on that, hey, we're restricting that. I mean, by virtue of the plan commission, you guys restrict land uses and what people can do on their property as implementation of that. And so if we're looking at from a fundamental point of view, that is what the plan commission does. And so it isn't carte blanche to just do whatever, but having a mechanism in place that if they want to continue whatever growth that they want to do, those provisions are still there. And so the flexibility is baked in, whereas the existing freeway corridor does not provide that. So they're locked in with existing freeway corner, their CUP, it's only seasonal operation, that's all they got.
The administrative use permits though don't come to us, right? It's a.
Right, it's.
Right, so every single thing in their operation, they gotta come ask permission for. What's the cost of? I mean, shaking your head, you can answer.
No, so again, the ministry of use permit doesn't mean that every, you know, let's say they wanna build, you know, every stretcher doesn't require its own separate planning approval permit. It's a site plan review. So let's say if you're doing a residential project, you know, let's say under our code, we have land use compliance review for uh for multifamily units. Each individual unit doesn't trigger its own separate administrative use permit. You do one permit for all four stretchers.
But if they wanna change the shape of their their uh corn maze the next year or extend it, that's gonna trigger a new administrative process, no?
No. Cause they, on their master site plan identifies they'll have a corn maze as part of the operation. And then if they wanna change how the the design is, or hey, we're not gonna do pumpkins in this section, we're gonna do something else in this section. All that's allowed because it's covered under the original administrative use permit site plan review. So we don't, we're not gonna require, and it'd be silly for our resources to require a bunch of separate reviews for every little thing that's.
Well, we're trying to clar- clarify this because there seems to be a competitive nature between the two operations, being the city of Ukeipa and the pumpkin patch on concerts, entertainment. I mean, uh yeah, we're just looking for clarity to make sure nothing changes. I mean, it's a zoning change already, they're, like Stacy said, they're losing value by being it, being zoned agricultural, that uh all the implementations of the rest of it, if they don't currently exist now, um why not just keep everything the same? If nothing changes, why do anything?
And then in the fine print, it says permitted uses. Right, it says permitted uses for the amusement enterprise may operate in this new AT zoning, but in the fine print, it states permitted uses. So they're gonna be subject to a development agreement for every type of use they want. It says it in there, permitted uses. So they have to say, mother, may I, every single time they wanna do something?
No.
That's my concern, cause this is America.
Again, that is not what the requirement is. The development agreement is meant to encompass the overall larger operations as a whole and set the parameters that as they build into the future, we can streamline that stuff. Again, they've requested that that be removed, and so the plan commission, if that's a point of consternation, the plan commission, we've identified it as an option for you guys to remove that particular line note for the development agreement.
So we could zone it um commercial, agricultural?
We can change the name, yeah, that's fine.
It's a, it's semantics, and we're not playing that game. Regional commercial, uh I mean.
Right.
That, yeah, we can call it whatever you want, is clear enough answer for us that it doesn't matter. As long as the agricultural name's still in there, the second one doesn't matter.
I agree.
Agreed.
I agree.
Regional agricultural uh commercial?
Just commercial.
We'll just leave.
Regional commercial. Should not change their zoning. It's their property. Why change it?
They're being strong-armed.
They're being very strong-armed, and it concerns me as a Ukeipa citizen.
You know, and I'm sure we're gonna hear from the pumpkin patch representatives tonight too as far as um what they've had conversations with staff and 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 also with their presentation with the planning commission. And obviously, I I have had questions, I've asked Ben questions about this. Now, the pumpkin patch has really been kind of probably my most focus on this particular plan. And obviously, this is in place, we're trying to clean it up. I think we're trying to make it better as a city, which I appreciate staff's hard work on that. Again, this has been an operation for, I don't know how many years.
Thirty.
Thirty-some years. Um I think when they do their seasonal activities, I tend to avoid the off-ramp there at uh um um Oakland Road because it's a a lot of people come in. This is a very viable um uh um venue for the city. It brings in a lot of revenue. So my focus is, like the fellow commissioners, is to protect their interests. I think they've been great, a great benefit to this city. Um whether the ag tourism really helps define that, solidify their continued use in the future. And I don't believe they're going anywhere, I think it's a very successful enterprise. Um but I just wanna make sure we're not diminishing what they can do, uh how they do their operations, the flexibility they have with their operations, uh so they can continue to do that. I'm sure they bring in a lot of revenue from the standpoint of uh tourism and hotels and gas and everything else. So I think the city really relies on that. We're kind of in a budget crisis, so we don't wanna diminish the business resources of a of an entity that's been very beneficial to this city. So that would be my concern, and again, I echo Commissioner uh Stacy and and Lyle's comments on that to make sure that we are addressing them. They are a vital part of this community, we want them to continue to be that. And so um I know we've been given a lot of information to digest as part of this plan, and so I've had a a lot of late nights trying to read through all the information, but I think I've been more focused on the pumpkin patch. My kids went there when they were little, uh and I want the, my grandkids to go there when they're uh old enough to go through the corn maze and everything else. So uh again, I echo my fellow commissioners' concerns about that. And again, just to address those concerns, and again, I look forward to hearing from their representatives tonight.
Just to add a little bit, they employ seven hundred kids in that season. Um forty percent of them from this town right here, eighty percent of them from the tri-city area. Um they have twenty-one annual employees that work that place year-round, all local. I mean, I just don't wanna trade them out for the shinier new toy. Looking at the revenue summaries of some of this um speculative future on these buildings, and we we gaga at the at the amounts of money, the potential income, and uh we were uh, we're looking at something we actually have that's been an institution of this town for the the speculative earnings of potential spending of trip drivers and employees that may or may not be from this city, so.
So I I do wanna, I think, clarify, one, the proposed update doesn't get rid of the pumpkin patch and provides the flexibility for them to continue. So I think if the sentiment is we want to keep them commercial so that they can get rid of the pumpkin patch, that is a different discussion. Um I think in terms of philosophy, if we're talking about trying to preserve that institution while baking in flexibility for them to get rid of the pumpkin patch, I think that's an important distinction. Two, I do wanna note, you know, in terms of the benefits, the pumpkin patch is a institutional benefit from the community. It's something that we've all gone to. Um but in terms of the fiscal return of that use as it currently stands, pumpkin patch does not generate revenue of any significant caliber for the city. Really, it's more the experience and then providing opportunities in the plan for them to add additional uses that maybe drive additional revenue opportunities. But if we're saying we wanna protect the pumpkin patch by providing flexibility for them to get rid of the pumpkin patch, and that there's a high value for this use, I think we're we're conflating a few different elements that may not be.
I wanna give them what they want, ask them what they want.
And I'm gonna tell you, you're absolutely wrong. They do give back to the city because the economic impact that they provide to the city, Panera brand, they ran out of food last year. So if you're telling me that they don't provide something to the city, that is absolutely a false statement.
Maybe not directly because you don't make money on pumpkins, cause it's a produce sale. But uh you do get, you do get a piece of beer sales, food sales, and maybe it's only, you know, three and a half months. But uh, yeah, maybe not as much as you'd like for the area it covers, but it certainly is uh an earning.
Plus, they've invested a substantial amount of money in the expansion of Live Oak Canyon. They put in the cur- they helped with the curbs and the gutter sidewalks. So I'm assuming they helped do this in good faith that they would keep their CUP.
Yeah, and that would stay in place. Again, I'm not arguing that the pumpkin patch isn't a benefit to the community. I'm reiterating that we see the benefit, and so we're trying to provide the flexibility for them to continue to operate and to provide the flexibility that as they adjust their operations in the future, there is a mechanism that is actually there for them to do it. Um and so i- if we wanna keep the pumpkin patch, then we wanna make sure that we have provisions that allow for that to stay there.
And keep their zoning, don't devalue their property, because to me, that's a precursor to something way worse.
Ben, their current CUP is 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 current, right? When when did they get their CUP?
They got it in twenty twenty-two.
After five years of negotiating that process, I mean.
Okay.
But actually, one of our jobs here is protect the community as well as the city. And I can't see any reason why that particular corner made it into agricultural. Couldn't be just rezoned, leaving it um, you know, at at commercial or. Couldn't be just rezoned, leaving it, um, you know, at, at commercial or you need it and move your, your scenic, you know, zoning some, to some other location. Or, you know, we just, um, you know, I think we're just biting the bullet by trying to take a, a business in our community and not looking after them. Why, we just want to see them left alone with the zoning so they don't have to come in, you know, and worry about getting this thing, something through because we, the city decided to tax them money for whatever. But if they were left as a commercial, then it's, it's good to go and nothing changes with them. But I think by making it agricultural, there's got to be a loophole in there. There's a reason.
I do want to clarify, there's no provisions in here that says we're going to tax the pumpkin patch.
You guys never proposed to them to give a percentage back to the city?
Five percent of gross receipts?
Okay. I, I think it should be, maybe we back up real quickly and do disclosure of ex parte communications um, on this, um, plan. But I do want to note, again, with kind of any sort of entertainment use, there's usually some sort of, of revenue component share that does happen. That's fairly standard course of operations. But I think at this point, given it sounds like that there's a lot of specificity in certain comments that we disclose in ex parte communication.
I'll tell you my ex parte communication right now. As soon as I was approached, actually stopped for, by Pacific Industrial to try to get me to have a meeting with them. I had a meeting with them. So I wanted to actually hear from a property owner. So I did reach out to the pumpkin patch and I met with them to see how this affected them. Cause that's what I'm supposed to do. That's my due diligence as a commissioner.
Okay. What just, um, do we have, how many speakers we have to speak on it? Let's, let's just get into the speakers.
We have 10, but the applicant for Pacific also has a presentation that they would like to do. As part of the, the rules procedures, they're able to do that too.
Yeah, we can do ex parte. Same. I'm concerned for changes as soon as you see a big pink square of ag or tourism on the map. You, uh, you want to know how that zoning change, when you can look at historical zoning, you want to know how it changes and they're concerned for their business. And, uh, yeah, sat down with the pumpkin patch just to know what, why, what was coming their way, what their concerns were, what, uh, yeah, I mean, they're looking down the barrel of a huge change. So.
Um, I contacted Chris, I can't remember Chris's last name at the pumpkin patch because I was confused about the, uh, the num, their acreage, how many acres that they did have. And I was wondering about the, uh, the new designation of open space conservation and how many, well, how that affected them in their acreage. Cause they're now, they're going to have split zoning on, on their acreage. So I needed, I just needed to know how many acres they had. And that's going, that'll be one of my questions later, but I'm just, I'm waiting because these guys are like, they're rocking it. Um, and of course I had the meeting with, um, Pacific Oaks representatives. Uh, I declined the second meeting with Pacific, with Pacific Oaks. I've spoken with Ben and I spoke a little bit today with, what's your name again? Stacy.
Oh yeah, I, I had a meeting with Pacific Oaks.
So we, do we want to get to speakers now?
Uh, we can have Pacific Oaks do their presentation. Um, I do know, um, for the meetings with Pacific Oaks that, that people reference, all the materials that, um, that were provided, that meeting is also on the, the agenda packet report.
Okay, let's do it.
Do we want to continue the ex parte? Yeah. Cause I mean.
I've had no involvement with anybody.
Stacy. Yeah, I did have a meeting with Pacific Oaks along with staff, planning staff. It was a one-on-one meeting and I concur with Ben, the, the material that was presented to us in the packet is, I think what was presented to us at that meeting. And I've also had conversations with representatives from the pumpkin patch as far as they had called me and we talked about the project.
I feel left out.
Yeah.
Way to go, Richard.
Wow.
What helps me?
Why aren't we having hearings? Why are you having hearings?
So good evening commissioners and planning staff. I'm Terri Allen with Pacific Industrial. And we are here for the application of a 2 million square foot industrial project known as Pacific Oaks Commerce Center. I've got with me Dan Floriani, the co-founder of Pacific Industrial, our project architect, Chris Savage with RGA, our project civil engineer, Jacob, uh, Horn from Kim, or sorry, Jacob Blaze from Kim Lee Horn. And I've got the EPD team who's been involved as an environmental and planning development consultant with us. So all of us are here to answer any questions. Um, before I jump into my presentation, I think maybe I can address some of the questions I heard asked before about the number of trucks. Specifically just for our proposed warehouse project, we have a total of 739 trucks per day. That was in the traffic study. And of that, the four axle, the semi trucks are 378 trucks per day. So the numbers that were presented before were for the entire freeway corridor specific plan. The numbers that I'm presenting are, are for solely our, our project.
Is that, excuse me, but is that both trips? When you say you have that many, is that just one in and then what about, what about, uh, out? So we have a, does that double that number?
No, we're not doubling that number. This is the total daily number from the traffic engineer. And so they are looking at in and out, both AM peak and PM peak. It depends on where the trucks are coming from. Um, and we don't have a tenant at this time. So it's hard for me to definitively tell you the number of trucks. If the trucks are doing very close distribution, the trucks might come and go and use the dock door more than one time per day. If a truck is going, say to the port of LA or it's going to Phoenix, that dock door might get used once per day. And so there is a little bit of variability and the traffic consultant, uh, knows that. And based on the, the modeling rules, performed our analysis under a more conservative analysis, including cold storage, 25% of the building assumed cold storage for food distribution because those are, uh, more intense trips. And so they've given us that flexibility based on the conservative, um, trip analysis. So I hope that answers some of the question on that. If not, we can, um, maybe get the traffic engineer back online for that. So you know, Ben covered a, a lot of our presentation and many of you have seen some of these materials before. So I will do my best, um, to be brief because I know there's other things that you want to speak about, um, this evening. So our project again is in the heart of the, uh, freeway quarter specific plan. It'll be two 1 million square foot buildings. And we've been invested in this project for approximately four years. In that time, we've taken time to meet with various community groups and stakeholders to understand what the community cares about and maybe what some of the needs are. And what we, we understood is that Ucaipans like Ucaipa the way it is and we appreciate that. And, you know, to that end, we did not just pop up last minute with a warehouse, um, assuming that people were going to be excited about that. And so before I get into the details, I really want to talk a little bit more about how we approached this. Cause I think it's maybe different than some other developers. So we started in January of 2021, holding meetings with city council, current city manager, prior city manager, Ben's, uh, team, the adjacent property owners. We've had a number of conversations with the pumpkin patch over the years about how our use might be compatible with theirs. We've met with conservancy, environmental groups, uh, to try to understand what development could look like and how we could fit within the community. And there was three very, uh, clear themes that emerged from all of these conversations. One, that we needed to maintain the rural feel of what makes Ucaipa special. That we had to protect the ridge line that parallels the 10 and make sure that the scenic, uh, ridge lines and views were protected. And that we needed to provide the employment and tax, um, benefits. So with that information, then we then set out with our design team after we got that feedback to try to come up with a project that respected and honored those priorities. So we have our two building layout with a number of features that are going to be attractive. Um, as Ben mentioned, it's a speculative project. We do not have a tenant yet. Um, some of the examples of tenants that we've done projects with before or that could use this site would be like an LG electronics. Uh, we've done similar building for Stanley Black and Decker. Could be an Under Armour. We don't know the type of use. We will say that this is, um, not anticipated to be an Amazon project. We do know their team. We do actually have an Amazon building in one of our portfolios. This is not, uh, a site design in a location that they're interested in. Um, for their fulfillment centers, they need more parking and some different things that we have not built in. And that's, it's not something that we're, we're courting or anticipating for this site. But we do know that users are going to like this site for a couple of key reasons. One is the 42 foot clear height. So clear height is basically interior racking height. Not long ago, 36 foot clear was the standard. And as, uh, land prices get out, go up, land becomes sparse and becomes harder to entitle warehouses. Then, uh, users are maximizing volume within their footprint by going taller. This site is particularly attractive because it has really long driveways that allow truck queuing that gets the trucks off the city streets. They also have full drive around capability from the building. So they can move containers from one side, which might be inbound to the other side outbound without having to go on a public street to move those containers around. And one of the very unique features is this large parking lot, the, uh, I guess west side of building two, which has another 322 trailers. This really provides flexibility for the users to manage their peak demand, to, um, do whatever scheduling they need to, to have a place for drivers to park. Again, where they're not on city streets. And this is a feature that you won't find on a lot of other warehouse sites. A few of the design enhancements you can't see from the site plan would be that we would employ 50% more skylights than industry standards. So that's just one example where this small change allows more natural daylighting to the point that most of our tenants can turn off their warehouse lights during the daytime and operate without using electricity. Another feature is going with 100% concrete instead of asphalt. It's a no brainer. It costs, uh, costs more upfront, but it lasts longer in terms of maintenance. But I think some of the things people don't think about is that asphalt creates more heat load on the glass, which requires more AC and cooling in the interior. Where the white pavement, uh, doesn't create the same heat island effect, less electricity use, lower cost of operating. So there's a number of other design efficiencies where we're going to use lead principles. We're going to have solar for conditioned space. We're going to have EV charging and just other enhancements that let users, uh, manage their cost, operate efficiently and reduce their energy consumption and their, their footprint. As Ben mentioned, we've specifically designed a modern farmhouse aesthetic with the metal standing seam roof and siding to try to blend in with the surrounding canyon. The landscape will enhance the architecture even more by using native and existing plants. Uh, more oak trees hence the name of the Pacific Oaks Commerce Center. So that we can make sure that this is a, a building that really fits into the surrounding environment. I'm going to skip this, um, because I think the video shows you a little bit better than this aerial can about where the project's situated and how it really is hidden from the view corridor. Oops. So we produced, um, this video a little while ago. Again, it's not a marketing video. There's no trees in it. This is not what the building looks like, but we did this study more as a line of sight and grading to really show that the building is what, uh, Dan refers to as hidden in plain sight. So this aerial demonstration will take you, um, from the 10 freeway. If you're going eastbound and exit you at Live Oak, which is the, uh, primary access for the site. So as you're exiting Live Oak now, you're kind of heading straight towards the pumpkin patch. Again, the pumpkin patch isn't in view, the tree, the existing trees are not in view. We did this to highlight where the property is. As Ben mentioned, the green areas are really the property boundaries. Our warehouse buildings you'll see will sit behind that. This is the existing Live Oak condition. If our project is approved, part of the end structure will be adding one lane in each direction. That will ease the pumpkin patch traffic at their peak, but also facilitate access to our property. So in a quick second here, we're going to turn on what's going to be a new project road that's going to go east from Live Oak, uh, to serve our buildings. But it will also dead end at our property line and serve as a future extension of Wildwood Canyon and connect to the future of Wildwood Canyon interchange. So we wanted to leave this view in to show the project road. We're leaving as much of the canyon and natural topography as we can. Again, we want to keep the same rural feel, but this topography also, um, makes it screen the buildings so that you cannot see the buildings from Live Oak. Okay. Now briefly, we'll, um, jump up in the air with sort of the drone view of about 40 feet high off the project road so that you can actually get a glimpse of where we've tucked the buildings, um, into view. And I would say again, the buildings are approximately a half mile east of Live Oak. That's kind of how far off the, uh, street they are. Again, that's not the pretty architectural viewing. It's, it's the block. It's the, uh, kind of limits of this model. But I think it gives you a good idea of where the buildings sit relative to the road. This will take a quick jump up in the air and it'll drop us back on the east end of our project on the 10 freeway. And we're probably 385 feet in the air now. But you can see from the graphics, some of the existing ridge lines, you can see some of the areas where the pumpkin patch has planted or farmed. And when you get back down to the street level or the I-10 level, you can't see the rooftop of these buildings. And that was very intentional based on the feedback we received over the last three or four years that preserving the ridge lines was very important to the community as well as not having development sit on the freeway. This glances just back to the south to show you that you would see hilltops. Again, there would be trees on this. There would be planting on this. This isn't the view that you're going to see, but you're not going to see a structure. And this is going back westbound on the 10, exiting at Live Oak and bouncing up 385 feet in the air to glance back to where the buildings would sit. And then kind of bringing you back down to the grade. Okay. So kind of jump through the rest of it. We know the screening and aesthetics is important, but so are the open space and the traffic. So I want to address those briefly. On the open space of the 330 acres that we control in the freeway quarter specific plan, we're proposing to build out only approximately one third of the site. As Ben mentioned, 95 acres would be set aside as open space. And we are working on a multi-use trail that would meander through the property and into the ridge in the canyons, which is something that you would typically see more in a residential development, not a warehouse. But I think it's something that not only benefits the community, but it's very attractive to the tenants that are going to call our park home. Um, because employees that have access to this open space is a really different feel than say a warehouse that might be on a gritted out system that's warehouse after warehouse after warehouse. This is going to be a really, uh, attractive, uh, outdoor campus feel to it. For the traffic improvements, we were definitely aware of the peak traffic generated by the pumpkin patch as we've enjoyed the site. Uh, as Ben noted, our traffic counts were intentionally taken at the height of pumpkin patch season so that we could understand the impacts of our traffic. And that was not by, um, accident, but the goals of solving the traffic for the community for ease of access to the pumpkin patch are definitely aligned with our project's success. As easy in and out is going to be critical to the businesses that want to locate in our site. So to ease congestion, we will be completing the provenance to Live Oak, a lane in each direction, a signal at Live Oak in the project road. And eventually, like I said, connecting to the Wildwood interchange. So we have shared both with the pumpkin patch owners and with the city staff that we were willing to provide some additional improvements to assist the pumpkin patch experience, whether that's helping with grading, providing some additional parking, continuing to provide places for them to plant on open space land that is not part of our development because we're proposing development of only a third of our site. We're happy to be at that table and part of that solution, um, if that benefits the community. And we've, I think, made that, that statement to Tyler, Chris can, can speak to that, that we're, um, willing to be a partner in helping to, to solve some of these issues, to make sure that they thrive. So in, looking at our site plan and looking at the existing freeway corridor specific plan, there's a couple of things the specific plan as exists today has not been able to solve. And one is the city's jobs to housing ratio. Ucaipa has. Ukaypa has point five-three jobs compared with a statewide jobs-to-housing ratio that's over one. And what that simply means is that more Ukipans are driving out of the city to find employment. There are not enough jobs in Ukaypa based on the housing needs. And what that means is besides the drain on the individual that's commuting is that ancillary spending for gas, lunch, errands, that is done outside of Ukaypa. With our proposed project, we anticipate between twelve hundred and sixteen hundred permanent jobs, as well as seventeen hundred jobs created during the construction phase. And all of that means that more Ukipans can work where they live and more dollars can continue to flow through local Ukaypa businesses. I think the main impediment in the freeway corridor specific plan is the lack of infrastructure. The specific plan's been in place since two thousand and eight, and there's been very limited development. And that is because the water, sewer, electrical, master storm drain don't exist in this freeway corridor specific plan. And with the approval of our project, we will extend the water line over four miles from the north side of Ukaypa at Avenue D in Ukaypa Boulevard, under the ten freeway at Live Oak, and into the freeway corridor specific plan. So, along with the water, the sewer, the drainage, and the electrical, you know, that build-out is north of thirty million dollars. That's likely why development has not occurred to date. Because a fast-food pad, a gas station, a small strip mall, they don't have the resources to tag that kind of infrastructure to their project. And it's going to take a catalyst like the Pacific Oaks projects to get those utilities in place. And as part of doing that, the utilities would be oversized so that there's capacity for additional development to occur in the freeway corridor specific plan. So, briefly touch on some of the fees. The recurring fees to the city of Ukaypa. The property tax value for Ukaypa share is estimated at seven hundred and ninety thousand in year one. And that figure alone, if that was in place now, represents a six percent increase to the city's twenty-three, twenty-four budget for that line item, and also a four percent increase to the city's in lieu of vehicle license fees compared to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So, it's an impactful number. These numbers are actually not my numbers. The two figures for annual economic output and one-time economic output that are scored were created by DTA, which is a consultant hired by the city to do an economic benefit analysis for the overall freeway corridor specific plan. But as part of that, they studied our project specifically. And the city's economic consultant had estimated between a hundred and fifty million and a hundred and ninety-eight million in annual economic benefit as a result of our project. They also have one-time economic benefit of two hundred and seventy million during the construction period. So, that's the labor and the wages, construction materials, and spending in the city throughout our development. And then we have fourteen million dollars in one-time economic impact fees that would go to the city's general plan, but also provide services for public, police, and fire. And not included in these figures, but a condition of approval of the project if it's approved, is a contribution of five hundred thousand to a fire aerial ladder truck, as well as our property would be included in the EIFD, where additional tax payments will fund additional capital projects for the next, how many of our decades? So, I briefly touched on our jobs. Creation, I mentioned, arranged between twelve hundred and sixteen hundred employees from the city's economic consultant, and that's because we don't have a specific user identified. But what's important about those jobs is that it's varied across a wide spectrum of skills. These are not just truck drivers and forklift operators, but with a projected twenty thousand square feet of office planned per building. There are office workers and managers, in IT personnel, there's accounting, AR and AP personnel, shipping and receiving, HR, facilities, maintenance, security, inventory managers, general warehouse scene, and sophisticated logistics programming and scheduling that goes into running these warehouses. And they need employees that are both technical and non-technical, in skills from high school equivalency to advanced degrees. So, these are not maybe the warehouses that you have in mind from decades ago, at least in the million-square-foot range. These are highly sophisticated operations. And the size of the project also caters really to Fortune One Thousand companies that will invest in the local economy, they will hold job fairs, they will sponsor community events, and they will be highly attracted to Ukaypa's talented labor pool. So, just kind of like to leave you with this. For a community to thrive, it's got to balance a lot of different interests, right? Housing, education, services, jobs, and yes, logistics. We can't enjoy our daily lives without the movement of goods. And there can be responsible and limited industrial development that can provide a more complete community without the fear that this turns into a worst-case scenario of warehousing like maybe exists in adjacent cities, or what we hear may be coming in an adjacent city. Pacific Oaks is really designed as a single project and a one-time shot, right? This is thirty-five percent of the site, the rest we've committed to open space. There's no Phase One and a Phase Two, there's no more ask, right? This is the project. We believe that we've been responsive and adaptive to find the best solution to meet the needs of the community by providing jobs, providing warehouse, but doing it in a respectful manner where these warehouses are hidden behind the ridge line. They're placed away from the street. We've got a long project road and queuing on-site. We didn't try to maximize the entire acreage that we have available because we wanted to leave room for this excess trailer storage and places for the truckers to go so that they're not stacking on the city streets. I think that, to keep in mind too, as Ben noted, there is already warehousing allowed in the freeway corridor specific plan. This update in our project puts it in a place that we believe is more appropriate for the community, where it allows the residential and commercial to thrive, but also can coexist with the warehouse in a place that makes the most sense. And with doing this freeway corridor specific plan update and approving our project, there are actually less truck trips and traffic trips per day, eighty thousand, than what's already allowed in the existing zoning. So, we hope that you will, you know, take the time to consider what you have in front of you on its own merit, as just the manner in which we've approached it over a four-year history of trying to be sensitive about how we can play a role in not only providing jobs, but solving some of the city's structural deficit challenges in a meaningful way where the city doesn't have to raise taxes, cut services, or cut other benefits. So, I thank you for listening to this. I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question for you. In one of your slides, it says the project will generate a total of a hundred and fifty point four million. Didn't you mean could?
Yes, fair, thank you, Commissioner Chester. I, I do believe that the hundred and fifty is on the minimum and conservative range compared to what the outcome could be. But absolutely, I, I do want to be corrected that we don't have a tenant and I cannot guarantee that income.
Because these are projections, and if we look to the warehouses to the east of us, they're maybe at twenty-five percent capacity.
I can't speak to the reasons for that, but there are also kind of different design, different features, and we are a ways away from constructing our warehouse if we're successful tonight and getting through the permitting and process that will, will open down the road. It definitely is a weird economic time right now, but this is definitely a market and a project that we believe in long-term and are willing to invest the time, if we're successful here this evening, to go through that process of design and permitting and get to the point where we can construct the buildings.
Do you have facilities, bathroom facilities or anything like that for the truckers themselves? Because a lot of times, they'll come in and they're waiting for a load, they're not going to get the load for another couple of days. Well, they have a sleeper car, but that's only sleeping. So, here, and these facilities, are you, do you plan to put them in or something?
So, a lot of the actual interior build-out is going to be dictated by the tenant's needs, but in every million-square-foot building that I've done before, they do have trucking rest areas, areas where they can check in, where there's vending machines, where there's couches, there's TVs, they have lounge, they have restroom access, yes. That would be, that would be expected, that they were going to have a trucker's lounge in buildings of this size.
It's assuming you'd have, in that half-mile run from Live Oak Canyon to the warehouses, you'd have sewer and water running up that?
Correct, sewer and water, power. They would come from Live Oak, and they go all the way down the project road to the end of our project, and they're available as Wildwood Canyon gets extended. Those utilities are in place to be continued east.
Yeah, and I, I think what JR is asking is maybe intended facilities along that staging area of just even block-style outhouse restroom. So, it, it overexceeds the need that it doesn't ever spill out into the city for, you know, urinating in a bush because they're waiting in line down the road and they don't want to walk up the hill or drive. So, I think that's what he's getting at, just access to facilities. And I, I want to go on, I don't have any trouble with, I think you guys are great people. They've taken a lot of consideration into the city. And the fact that the city's chosen industrial, commercial, that balance, and they see the interest you guys have now. It's a choice the city's going to make going forward of this being a potential revenue source for, like you said, the build-out of, of the rest of this master plan community on the, on the south side of the freeway. Yeah, I think the problem is, is the speculative income. The, the, are the jobs from here, are they commuting from Reno Valley in the canyon? I mean, it, it's all speculative, right? We can only assume so much on all this and how much these truck drivers come and spend in the city. So, I think that's the biggest thing, is the speculation of quantities. It's hard to pin down, and it always looks really, really good. But it's, it's without the crystal ball, you know? It's, so, we see, like we'd spoke about in the meeting, we talked about the FIDC, right? Or F, is it the, the income-based?
The EIFD.
Yeah, whatever it was, I'm not an acronym, yeah. Not an acronym I deal with regularly. Yeah, and then us waiting on potential general, commercial, like business park, fast foods, build-outs of gas stations and whatnot, and that being another speculative future. So, the potential earnings for those are higher per square foot. But whether or not we actually build out to that, this is the bird in the hand. And I, I don't think you guys have a bad project. I think it's actually great for the now. But as you guys have heard, you guys are part of a bigger picture that has some abrasion in opinions. And I just wanted to say that upfront, that I don't think this is bad, you guys are bad, that it's a, it's a bigger picture thing, for sure. But I guess I got on to a rant, but the biggest thing was facilities should be considered, I think. I think it's a pretty minor thing to tie into the sewer with, you know, block outhouses, codes, you know, so they're not potential transient areas or whatever. But something along that, that quarter or half-mile route to get the truck drivers some facilities to not infiltrate into the city to relieve themselves.
And I, I think I'd like to chime in. I would think of seeing this project, and I've seen the, the video, and I think the, the applicants have done a, a good job. I think the last thing, and we read about the other cities that are, the citizens are complaining about the warehouses and the visual and all that. And we drive through Redlands and it's warehouse after warehouse. And I mean, I grew up in Redlands, I now live in Ukaypa. So, obviously, we see that development. It's not attractive, it's a, obviously, a necessity in the industry and the state in which we live. So, the fact that you are investing so much into developing this in a hillside location that from a visual standpoint, people driving by through Ukaypa aren't going to be looking over and seeing massive warehouses, I think is, is a compliment to the project. There's a lot of investment in doing that and, and obviously, being conscientious of this community in doing that. So, I think it's a good project from the standpoint. I don't think we can judge or evaluate economic potential. I don't think that as a planning commission is up to us. I think it's all part of that consideration. I think from the standpoint of this has been part of the original FCSP freeway corridor specific plan in the past, we're refining that, this is in place. I think we need to keep that in mind as a commission, that what we're trying to do is improve on it. And I think staff is trying to improve on that designation. So, you're a part of that. Again, you're investing a lot in this community. I can't imagine running four miles of utilities, that's a huge investment. But obviously, it's going to... Oh, anything's possible, I think it's just a matter of money. But from the standpoint of allowing for future businesses to go into that area, and whether there is some payback for that or not, or some initial investment. But from the standpoint, I think it's going to facilitate more and better development in that area, basically, west of the freeway in that area. So, anyway, I think, I appreciate the effort that the applicant and you guys have put into this project.
Hi, question. When we had our meeting, you talked about housing development, and it would go in front of, looks like, Building Park Area Two. It's about thirty, looks like thirty-five acres, maybe thirty-eight, it's fuzzy. You didn't mention that housing development in your presentation tonight. Is that part of your land and?
It is part of our land, it is not part of our project development. It would remain undeveloped, and it has this residential zoning on it. We are only industrial developers, we have no plans to develop that. We actually don't believe it has value as residential land. And as an industrial owner, we would prefer that there is no residential next to the industrial use. Those are uses that aren't great next to each other. So, in our plan, it's, it's zoned residential, but for us, it acts as a screening and open space between Live Oak and our project.
I was left with the impression that, that it would be built out to house the workers that would be working and to give them housing in the, in the local area.
It is not, it's not slated for any temporary or construction housing.
So, is there any future plans to sell that parcel of land, to split it off and sell it? If it's residential?
We've, we don't have anything concrete, but we've had a discussion with the city to date about potentially dedicating that land to the city for, for uses or improvements that it might need. So, it's, we don't have an intent to develop it as residential or sell it as residential land.
So, if in the future, however it happens, if that is built out, will that be more than the, the one-third that you were talking about tonight? The one-third of your property that'll be developed, does that increase that?
If it did get developed, then yes. What I'm saying today is we have three hundred and thirty acres. We're going to develop a hundred and twenty-five and have ninety-five acres of open space. We really consider their residential land sort of a non-factor, as we're not residential developers. If it ever got developed, then yes, that would increase the total site development, but it wouldn't affect the open space.
How would, how would the dedication of that to the city affect our, our residential numbers? I mean, it's thirty-eight acres, zoned R-12. So, I mean, quick math, thirty-eight times twelve is four hundred and fifty homes that wouldn't, right?
I don't think it was.
It's R-12, is that not the right color I'm looking at? Or R-six, sorry, is it R-six?
Yeah, it was like a hundred and, and it was like in the low hundreds of capacity. And so, one of the suggested changes for the RADA is, is one, it should have been in the case is that public facility is being allowed within that entire thing. And so, if it was to be transferred to the city, there's other public facility needs that, that we've identified long-term, so it would help facilitate that. But we don't know what that is or what the case may be.
So, if it does get dedicated to the city, that a hundred and eighty homes, or six times thirty-eight? Two-twenty-eight, two hundred and twenty-eight homes would be forced on other parcels to be densified to meet, meet those demands, correct?
No, not necessarily. We do have provisions within our housing numbers to kind of paint some stuff. And so, again, we don't know what the, the outcome would be. But we would not necessarily be constrained to reallocate that elsewhere.
Are we ready for any comments?
I think we can go into opening the, the public hearing for comments. I did want to just throw out, and certainly, if the, the operators of Pumpkin Patch are providing comment, the term agro-commercial tourism, so it has commercial and still AT. And then, what? Stuttering, and some additional specificity. So, if there are certain changes, certainly, they had identified some, some elements to be, to be tweaked that, that we had concurred with, including like the removal of the development agreement. But just something to, to keep in mind that as a kind of middle ground where we protect the pumpkin patch and allow the flexibility, but also not... the Pumpkin Patch and allow the flexibility, but also not pigeonhole them, so to speak.
Can I just add to that? And I think what we're getting at is not protecting the idea of the Pumpkin Patch in perpetuity. We're we're more concerned with protecting the owners and their long-term plan as they had it set up in the zoning before. So we can say, we want to protect the Pumpkin Patch by making it agro-tourism, but that's forcing them to continue down that path instead of having the flexibility to do as they please in per their plans as they were zoned previously. So I just, the semantics of Pumpkin Patch versus owners, we're not protecting land or businesses, we're protecting individuals to proceed as they foresaw.
Yeah, and in any case, discretionary review process would be required anyway. So the outcome and the decision-making authority would be, if it was to transfer over, like that would be virtually the same.
Okay.
First, we have Elijah Silva.
Then, just to confirm, we have three minutes per speaker. Donna, are you able to run the clock?
Yeah, we can. I mean, I'm looking for the property owners. Can you give them a little more time because they have a little better project they have to put together? And we give the builders, developers, plenty of time to get their case. So I think we should get those landowners the opportunity to speak and get their case first.
So if the planning commission wants to extend the time for public comment speakers, you guys can decide to do that. Again, I want to note clarity and procedure. We have a specific development project included as part of this proposal, which is Pacific Oaks, and so they are afforded the ability to provide, they're not a public comment, they're an applicant response. And so it is a little bit different. In case of other property owners, they don't necessarily have a development proposal that's being weighed in. We haven't received plans or anything like that. And so I just want to make that distinction clear, that one is a tangible project that is being acted upon in concert with a specific plan, and then other property owners is them expressing their opinions, but there isn't necessarily a actual project in review.
Okay. Go ahead, sir. Okay, good evening, Honorable Commission Chair, fellow commissioners. My name is Elijah Silva, and I'm here today to speak in favor of Pacific Oaks project. There is a significant economic impact in a city under a certain population threshold as a result of any private...
I'm sorry, hang on a second. It's a new box since I said it last. It's counting down. How do I stop that?
It's her first time doing this, so.
Thumb up session. How about? I think I got it.
Just in case you didn't start how you liked your pitch the first time, you get another chance at it.
Great, great. Okay, good evening. Okay, yes, so good evening, Honorable Commission Chair, fellow commissioners. My name is Elijah Silva, and I'm here to speak in favor of Pacific Oaks project. There is a significant economic impact in a city under a certain population threshold as a result of any private development bringing in over a hundred thousand square feet of employment opportunity. Once you cross the five hundred thousand square foot threshold, there is both regional and generational impact that over two million square feet, this project has the opportunity to transform lives, generations, this region, and to have a ripple effect to regions further east, bringing economic opportunity to our neighbors beyond, thereby strengthening our interstate commerce. So a yes vote today is not only for the future of families in Ucaipa, it's for the future of commerce in Southern California and beyond. So please approve this project. Thank you, guys. God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have David Martinez.
My name is Dan Martinez, and I'm here to ask for your yes vote on the Pacific Oaks Commerce Center project. My generation needs jobs so that we don't raise our young people to rely on governments to raise their families. We believe in free market American jobs, work with our hands and honest day pay. Two million square feet of jobs is significant growth in the right direction for a generation looking for work. Approve this project. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Sat Strasters.
No, it went back to zero.
Okay, you got to start where.
Program three.
I feel like if I may get past the first twenty seconds, I'm good to go.
Okay, keep going.
All right, good evening. My name is Sat Strasters. I'm with Care California, and I want to point out a couple of highlights. First of all, who we are. So we're a community organization that really gives developers a hard time before we put our thumbs up and our stamp of approval on a project. And just like you mentioned, there are a ton of industrial projects out there. So there's a lot that that there is to say about industrial as a whole, but let me just tell you a little bit about this project and why we choose to stand behind it. First of all, is generational impact. A lot of what was talked about today and even what Commissioner Lyle talked about with the Pumpkin Patch was a genuine concern for residents in Ucaipa, homegrown red dirt people. And so when we're talking about two million square feet, the reason we use the term generational impact is we either receive the revenue or we don't. Private development doesn't have to choose Ucaipa, but they did in this case. And so we celebrate that because we recognize that regardless of who the tenant is, regardless of the case, if we don't build it, we won't get the revenue. It's not every day that somebody's trying to put this big of a block here, just like Commissioner Higginson pointed out. There's a lot of other places where they're throwing them up all over the place, but in Ucaipa, it's not the case. So you get the best of both worlds. In this case, we saw that they tucked it in a mountain, but you still got two million square feet. So whether or not the spec goes with Amazon, or whether or not it goes with food distribution or whatever it goes with, the other thing about these tilt-ups is that they're easily convertible. So there's a lot of places, not just in the IE, not just in the high desert, but all over the place, where down the road, when you got millions of square feet, guess what? You can choose to do different things with it. But what happens is if we don't build it, and I'm not trying to sound funny, they don't come. And so what we want to do in this arc of industrial, because like we mentioned, some of these places down the road, twenty-five percent occupancy, they're not going to keep building industrial forever. It wasn't as hot as it was four years ago. It went from point seven vacancy to two-point and so on. So these types of buildings aren't going to be built forever. There's going to be a period of time where people, developers like this group, they're not going to want to come in and build it. So whatever was built is what you're going to have to work with. And then we're going to have to wait for the next arc of development, for the next thing, who knows what that's going to be. So we're looking at very honest, on-the-ground observations to say, what's in the best interest of the young people, just like David Martinez said, of Ucaipa? When they look back a generation or two down the line, what are they going to say about the decisions that were made behind the dais today? Was it about how the project could have been better? And then we can just assume that this is a big group, they got attorneys, they'll pay for whatever changes, but the reality is your decisions have impacts. There's a lot of people that are yes men, rubber stampers behind the dais, and there's a lot that really have genuine community interest. But my encouragement to you is make sure that you approve this project because this is a huge economic benefit for this city. I just want to reiterate some of the numbers, too. Close to eight hundred thousand dollars in taxes annually, a hundred and fifty million dollars annually, and that's on the low end speculative. Yes, we could debate the numbers all day long, but these are numbers that have to be vetted, they're written, and they're read into the legal record, and then the developer is accountable for these speculations. Two-hundred-and-seventy million one-time payout, not nearly as speculative. These are cost projections on construction. And a fourteen million dollar development fee, as Commissioner Higginson pointed out, that that puts a gitch in your little budget issues right there. We're talking about millions, again, hundreds of millions, tens of millions, that go back into the budget and back into the coffers that we wouldn't have otherwise. So to point it out, just something that I found, and you guys know better than I do, I'm not a commissioner, but I found some stuff on homearea.com, and I found an unemployment rate that's an adjusted unemployment rate of fourteen point eight percent for Ucaipa. We don't know when they're going to bring in, we don't know how they're going to get the developer to suit the right people, but we know we need these jobs. Thank you and God bless you.
Dr. Hanson Wong.
I was off for this project for a while until the last few minutes. Now I feel like I got some stink oil for some reason, but I'm sure I'm just paranoid. Anyway, so my biggest concerns have to do with vehicles and traffic. I think the way they described it, if the roads are put in, if the two lanes on each side are put in, if the mechanisms for the flow of traffic is appropriate and the interchange with Wildwood Canyon goes in prior as well, I feel there's enough outlets, and if we make the roads enough, that it might be resolving some of the problems. But if this isn't done, one of the concerns I have from a medical standpoint is diesel trucks that idle produces chemicals that are harmful to the public, including if you're putting residential housing in this area, it's of concern as well. The air quality of the state states that about sixty percent of the possible cancers from fuels is from diesel trucks. But again, you could correct that by making sure your traffic flow is appropriate and they're not just standing by idling and so on. The rest of it sounds pretty good to me. I'm very appreciative of the commission for concern, their concern of our businesses, Pumpkin Patch and so on. So thank you very much for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is John Sisley.
My name is John Sisley. I represent the plumbers, pipe fitters, and refrigeration for San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. I'm also a delegate to the Building Trades Commission, State of California, and a delegate to the Inland Empire Labor Council. I'm also an ex-army airborne ranger. I served with the Second Seventy-Fifth Ranger Division on a special operations squad in the late eighties and early nineties. And I came straight from the Middle East to my mom's house in Rialto when I came home. They didn't have the programs that they have now in construction for veterans. Finding a job was difficult. Thank God for the union job that I wound up with. Ninety percent of the guys that I served with are either dead, in jail, or homeless because a lot of us come back with baggage that we didn't leave with. And that union job helped keep me where I had to be. And every time you approve one of these projects with a union agreement that includes all the crafts, you're providing that opportunity for a community member, for a veteran, for somebody that really needs that. The developer has made a pledge to hire local and skilled construction workers and members to build their vision, ensuring a high-quality project and ensuring the community's basic economic needs are supported by the people all around. This project is great for our community, and we strongly urge you to approve yes on this today. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you for your service. Next, we have Timothy Slade.
They were all dressed nice. My name is Timothy Slade. I'm representing local four thirty-three ironworkers, but I'm definitely the Ucaipa native here because I'm not wearing a suit. I grew up here, went to Wildwood, went to Canyon, went to the ninth grade campus, and then graduated right down the road like everybody tonight. Like, this is my town, you know? I go to Powerhouse, I go to Pizza Chalet every Tuesday for the forty percent off chicken. Like, I've seen this town change. Like, I was here before the roundabouts, you know? It's, the town's going to change no matter what, and, you know, seeing development come in, you know, it's always a scary thing, and you guys definitely got a lot of stuff going on, but, you know, everything, everything grows, you know? Grass, people, and the city of Ucaipa's going to grow, and, you know, just growing smarter is definitely the way to do it. You know, all I see is just more families wanting to come here. Every time I leave to go out for work, wherever I'm at, people just talk about Ucaipa. I love the Pumpkin Patch because there is nothing cooler than seeing that Ferris wheel all lit up at night. You know, I understand your guys' concerns. I just know development's going to happen. You're either grown or you're dying, and I hope to see this town keep flourishing because I loved growing up here. I want to raise my kids and my family here and hopefully be old and retire in Big Bear. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robert Mad Dog.
My name is Robert R. Lugin. My local four sixteen Union Broadbuster Brothers recognized me as AKA Mad Dog. I served in the Marine Corps, and I took the chain of command as Sergeant of Arms for our local for nine years. I serve as delegate also for the IE Labor Council. We are here today to support this project and to ask for the commissioners' support as well. I lived in the San Bernardino County area for thirty years and would like to work close to home. The Pacific Oaks Commerce Center Warehouse Project will bring so much to Ucaipa. The developer has made a commitment to local hire. This is a guarantee that our children and families will be taken care of, have medical benefits, and have prosperities of life ahead of them. Please support our community, our families and the Ucaipa community with your yes vote today, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Eddie Campos.
My name is Eddie Campos. I'm a representative of the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters, Local nine oh nine. I'm here to express my support for the Pacific Oaks Commerce Center. The developer has committed to utilizing responsible contractors signatory to our council to build this project. The Western State Regional Council of Carpenters' mission is to ensure that the construction industry in San Bernardino County has a highly trained and professionalized workforce that supports projects that have positive impacts for the community. Our council takes pride in establishing partnerships with developers with the creation of good jobs, good wages, and good benefits with training and a secure retirement for all our members and all our brothers and sisters that are here tonight. I hope that you take into consideration the approval of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Thomas Ruiz.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Thomas Ruiz. I'm a representative for the Laborers International Union of North America, Local seven eighty-three, located here in San Bernardino County. And on behalf of our two thousand members that reside in the county and the thirty-eight thousand in Southern California, we support this freeway quarters specific plan. By approving this project, you'll be creating opportunities. As we've seen through some of the tax revenue that would be driven to the city, that is one aspect of development impact fees or property taxes, but also you're creating an opportunity for men and women to work in their local communities. As laborers, as other tradesmen, we often find ourselves traveling outside of the area to find work, and we work one day at a time, and we are building efficiently, on time and under budget, which means that we're constantly working ourselves out of a job. So having the opportunity to work close to home, be part of the fabric of the community by not having to travel to Orange County, LA County, to find the good paying wages that we are going to find here with a commitment from this developer to hire local skilled trained workers is an added benefit to the community. So tonight, we are here to support this very unique project. We've had the opportunity to build logistics facilities all throughout Southern California, but none like this one that has taken the consideration of the community and the the design of this warehouse to fit the fabric of the barn or even to shield it through the the height of the buildings usually. Usually developers are asking to build higher. They're not doing that. They're taking the considerations from the community to heart and as shown in their design. But also, the amount of infrastructure and development that will be able to spawn off of this certain development is a great opportunity to keep on moving Ucaipa and the future tax-based growing to continue to provide services and benefits to the community at large. So, we appreciate your consideration and we hope for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lastly, we have Tyler Ramison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. I am the property owner of the Live Oak Canyon Pumpkin Patch, and together with my brother, Chris Ramison, who's here tonight, we operate the pumpkin patch. And first and foremost, I'd like to say how humbled we are to see your extreme concern and vociferous support of our pumpkin patch. I know many of you have met with my brother recently about our concerns, and I've spoken to David regarding it. And we just really appreciate the community's support. We think it's a very special place. We think it's a place that sets Ucaipa apart, and we have fought to protect it as a pumpkin patch and as an asset to the community, both Ucaipa and the wider community. And, you know, again, we're just humbled by your support of it. And I'd also like to thank the staff, Ben and Fermine and Ryan, who we've had several meetings with, and really tried to understand what they were trying to accomplish. You know, I think we all got a lot of information very fast and tried to digest it before this meeting and tried to understand what was happening. And again, we are strong defenders of the pumpkin patch, so we saw things in there that gave us concerns. But again, you know, my brother and I work together basically every day of the year to put on this seasonal attraction, and tonight I speak for both of us in terms of what we, you know, like here, what we don't like here, and how we think it can, we can create, craft a win-win-win for the community, for the city of Ucaipa, for the pumpkin patch, and for the Pacific Oaks plan. So, our perspective is, first, we don't want to conflate the two issues between what we saw as some deficiencies in the freeway corridor specific plan and the Pacific Oaks Commercial Center. We think that Ucaipa, again, just as the pumpkin patch is a unique attraction, Ucaipa has attracted a unique developer here, a developer who's going to really move heaven and earth to hide 2 million square feet of industrial behind mountains. I think, you know, Redlands would have loved that, right? And so, I think we do have something unique there with Pacific Industrial and their project. And I don't think it's incompatible with the pumpkin patch at all. I think actually, in working with Pacific Industrial and talking to them and talking to Dan Floriani, I think that, you know, that project could actually enhance the pumpkin patch going forward in providing us access to some of their areas that they're not going to be utilizing, to expanding Live Oak Canyon and even the sidewalk areas connecting to the pumpkin patch. Our concerns and what you heard from a lot of it, what had to do with the development agreement, which as written, we interpreted as, okay, if you want to plant a pumpkin seed, you basically have to enter into a development agreement with the city and, which we didn't know what that was. It was an amorphous document that we would be required to sign, and we found that really untenable. Again, in productive meetings with Ben and Ryan and Fermine, we think we've, I mean, as Ben pointed out today, like, we think we've addressed that development agreement. There are some finer points, and I don't want to belabor, I know I'm, you know, already over my three minutes, but we...
That's a problem, thinking most time.
Yeah, we did provide, you know, we want to provide certainty that we're going to be able to continue to provide an asset to the community. And it's really in the finer points of, you know, we're busy during those three months. That's what our CUP covers, and we want to make sure that our CUP is going to remain in place or that our existing use is grandfathered. As the plan is drawn right now, you know, we have a CUP for almost 65 acres. That's going to be reduced to 48 acres and with some of that reduced to open space. So, we wanted to clarify, like, what can we do in the open space? Can we do a corn maze in the open space? Can we grow, you pick pumpkins in the open space? Can we have some, you know, small agricultural structures and irrigation? So, there's a lot of fine details here. We provided, I think many of you or all of you should have received a letter from us earlier today. We've also provided to Ben, and the contents of that made it into Ben's presentation. We had some other, again, clarifications that we wanted to have, that we've provided to Ben. I don't know what the best way to address those, Ben, are, but just in terms of, you know, allowing us, while we're busy during three months of the year, every day after that, we have zero revenue and we have 21 employees, and a lot of times we're just thinking, well, how do we make it to the next season? How can we financially get to be open? And a lot of that is being creative in, you know, having a concert or we're looking at different ways that we can expand the entertainment uses of the pumpkin factory and the pumpkin patch so that we, you know, can remain viable during the year. So, we would like that flexibility. That's kind of what's addressed in terms of allowing us to expand. If we're going to be ag tourism, we don't think we should be ag tourism only for three months out of the year. We think we should be able to do ag tourism the rest of the year, like any other business that zones something. So, these things are addressed in a document that we gave to Ben, and maybe Ben wants to address some of those. But again, we don't think that the Pacific Oaks project is incompatible with our use. We think it's, we're lucky to have Pacific Industrial presenting it, and I think that a lot of what our concerns have been allayed through meetings with staff. But we do have a few other issues that we need to iron out. And we mean, again, we all got an 800-page document on Thursday night, and it's not really rational to think that we can work out all those finer details in this short amount of time. So, I'm open to questions, but again, I think that we do have an opportunity here if we're rational and reasonable to craft something that makes this community even better than there already is.
I have a question. Are you worried about the amount of traffic come October, November, December, when the warehouses are pumping out volume for Christmas sales and everything, and then...
Yes, of course. We, you know, we worry about traffic every year.
Oh, yeah.
So, we're looking at some of the improvements that Pacific Industrial is, in terms of widening Live Oak, and we feel they're aligned with us. Like, nobody benefits from traffic. We, as part of the CUP process, widened Live Oak Canyon on our own dime. We put in curbing gutter, we put in sidewalk, and it's had a tremendous improvement on the traffic flow there in October. So, given that they did their study during October, given that they're talking about these improvements to Live Oak Canyon and maybe even increasing pedestrian access during the season will be helpful to us. So, we're confident that we're aligned with them in terms of, you know, minimizing traffic. Nobody benefits to have Live Oak Canyon stopped, and, you know, their warehouses are going to be economically unviable if we can't keep that traffic going. So, everybody's on the same page, I believe, in terms of keeping traffic going on Live Oak Canyon.
So, you've had meetings with the city about this.
Yes.
Okay, right at this point in time, how do you feel this change in the zoning is going to affect you?
Well, I think at me personally, because I'm, as a property owner, I think a lot of the concern that you've heard is really fraternal concern from my brother of like, okay, well, you know, we came in together to run this property, and now you're being downzoned from freeway regional commercial with an industrial with a CUP to this amorphous ag tourism. And I'm not so much concerned about whether we call it ag tourism, ag commercial tourism, whatever. I think that, you know, our goal is to maintain the pumpkin patch as an asset to the city. I think, you know, if I was solely financially motivated, right, I would have entered into an agreement to sell it long ago to an industrial developer to plop a million square feet there. So, yeah, I'm probably financially illiterate to be not as concerned about the downzoning of the property, but I feel that, you know, as long as we have the flexibility to run our business, we're comfortable with kind of what you want to call it, the ag tourism zoning. As long as we don't, we aren't saddled and we've gotten commitments from staff that we're not going to be saddled with in the future, okay, well, you can never be, you can never be anything else because we need to maintain you as agricultural land. I've gotten commitments that that's not what's happening, that we are really just a, you know, a tourism zoning. And in the future, if, you know, people don't want to buy pumpkins anymore, you know, I'm confident that we could come back to the city and, you know, we could find another use for the property. So, I'm not too hung up on that.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, you mentioned there were some other, I mean, obviously, we're considering the vote tonight for this, for this plan. You mentioned there were some other items you've been discussing with staff, and I don't know if we can, is that something we can codify or can we include those conditions? Because obviously, there's a lot of sentiment to make sure that the owners of this. I mean, have you worked that out, that that can be included in this particular approval?
So, I think kind of a few different components. One is certainly the city council's going to be the final acting body on this, and so certainly as part of your guys' decision, you know, we can, you can provide direction for city council that they consider, you know, additional kind of tweets on the language to make sure that it's clear. I actually kind of like the term agro-commercial tourism, since it establishes kind of the commercial nature, but still based on a agrarian, it's not just a cookie cutter, you know, bid bots or warehouse kind of use, and then adding some specificity. And then that would allow city council then to, would allow both time for us to kind of work together on the final points, and then city council's ultimate decision. And so, they'll have your guys' recommendation of, hey, we're kind of there, but we want to make sure that these little points that the pumpkin patch may has is flushed out, and then wherever that lands, the city council then has that backup to say, okay, yep, on the rat sheet, we want to see this tweet and this tweet. We've included already, based on the discussions in the rat sheet, some of the changes in the PowerPoint presentation identified kind of a few other kind of key elements that the pumpkin patch has requested that were certainly fine. I think Tyler's comment, you know, the pumpkin patch is an institution. All of us, I think, in this room have been there either as a kid like myself or as adult with our kids like myself as well. And so, it is a unique feature, and so as they evolve and grow, certainly there's a lot of potential there that the enjoyment factor of it doesn't necessarily need to be limited to just fall, but by providing an experience for the community at large year round. And so, that was kind of the intent was, it is a unique site, there's not another property like this anywhere else, and so it shouldn't just fall under a kind of a more cookie cutter standard, but really have the leverage that wherever that dream goes, because it is more of a, you know, people don't have entertainment farms, I think, just because they want to as part of a passion. And so, allowing that flexibility for that passion to grow and wherever that lands, the goals to have the flexibility to make sure that they can get accommodated through that process.
Could I interject? I mean, are you comfortable that every issue in this freeway specific plan has been identified to even put those as riders into our approval to city council? I think the best path forward would be an approval with continuation or continuation that gives everybody a chance to digest this for a month if they feel they're close till all the points are identified, and then those can be taken to council after being identified or ratified before that even comes to play. So, are you comfortable?
I'm, in terms of the question, am I comfortable that we've hashed out everything with the city for it to be approved? You know, I'm confident, given our productive relationship, that we, that we'll be able to kind of work through these issues. You know, we all got this information, you know, pretty quickly, and, you know, I think it's, unless Ben is, you know, willing to right now address any of these issues that he thinks would be problematic, then, you know, maybe that's the way to do it, is if he can look at any of these and say, well, I don't see how we could do this, or we can approve it. And I have copies here that I can provide to all the commissioners about just the additional issues, which we don't think are, we think they're important, but we don't think they're anything that we haven't kind of discussed.
Yeah, I think we can, again, going back to the idea, city council's going to be the one that votes on it. So, any of the recommendations that you guys have kind of at a high level, and then certainly any correspondence that the pumpkin patch provides, that will all be part of the public tractor for city council. And so, I would feel comfortable that we'll be able to have kind of the final, final language or verbiage that may be necessary for city council based on the planning commission's direction that some tweets to the agro-commercial tourism district provides, you know, the sentiment that the pumpkin patch should be a continued viable venture into the future. And that was always the intent, especially as they had done this CUP, is, you know, we want to make sure that they're able to be successful with that operation.
I think you've got to find that, I can't speak for city council, but I have a feeling they're going to have the same sentimental attachment to the pumpkin patch. And obviously, Tyler, I appreciate the comments you've made, appreciate the fact that you and Ryan and your family continue to run this operation and invest in our community. So, I think from the standpoint of an opportunity, it's going to go to city council for final approval. If those items are still unsatisfactory, please present those to city council at that time.
And are you comfortable with losing your regional commercial zoning?
I think, you know, again, I'm committed to the pumpkin patch, and I'm also committed to Ucaipa. And I feel like the, since the freeway corridor specific plan was implemented, we've all seen, you know, my wife won't stop ordering stuff off Amazon. I mean, she, you know, the world's changed, and I think we do have to realize that. And I'm okay with it because I think it's what the city needs, and I think that it does provide the flexibility, and we do have a developer who's willing, again, to move millions of yards of dirt to hide these things. So, I would hate to lose that opportunity.
I think we've heard from two parties, you know? I think your sign-on to it is great, and the Pacific Oaks project looks good too, but I think there's more, more people at the table than this to be downloaded of 800 pages than a freeway specific plan that landed 60 days ago. Was that plan implemented? That the actual adjustment of all the residential, commercial and all that?
So, the freeway corridor specific plan land use plan concept went to city council in 2021.
As it stands now?
Yeah. So, the layout kind of configuration was drafted from city council. We did the scoping meeting again in 2020. I have the dates on the EIR. Oh, Tyler, can I grab that?
I guess what I'm getting at, we feel like all parties have spoken. I don't know.
Yeah, so, we've been in communication with all the property owners... Yeah. So we've been in communication with all the property owners. As I mentioned, even when we did the kickoff for the freeway corridor specifically, and we did meetings with with the different property owners and try to figure out what hasn't been working, what would make it kind of better and kind of where that is. So again, and and again, I do want to also reiterate that the planning commission received announcements of the different stages of of information. So the notice preparation scoping meeting were in two thousand twenty two. And then the EIR became available in February of twenty twenty two. And then again, twenty twenty one is when the city council reviewed the kind of proposed land use configuration. So it's the discussions of the amendments to the specific plan, that the the evolution of the plan has been kind of in some form of talks since twenty twenty one.
Anyone else?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who do we have next, Murray?
He was our, he was our last public comment.
So we can close the, unless, I guess, if the Pacific Oaks want to do rebuttals since they do have that provision.
Yeah, I was gonna say, who wants to get the rebuttal?
Hi, commissioners. Hi, I'm Dan Floriano. I'm co-founder of Pacific Industrial. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I can hear myself louder than anything. But I don't have a rebuttal at all. I really appreciate, actually, all the comments and I appreciate everything Tyler said. I love the pumpkin patch. We don't want it to go anywhere. And so you guys voicing your concerns for it and wanting to protect it, I think, is unique on its own and needs to be heard, right? And so I think everyone's trying to digest what that is. I've told Tyler for years now that we're huge supporters of theirs and we've mapped out loosely ways we can help each other and use the land that we're not going to be using in a productive manner and help them expand their operations or have flexibility with seasonal planting and things way beyond my expertise. But I'm, and even making areas of our property accessible for overflow parking. Nothing's changed. We've always said that and we're full supporters of it. And so anyway, I really appreciate his comments and some of the details there. We obviously spent all our time and energy focusing on our project, trying to make sure we followed through on the obligations that are right and what we wanted to do to present to you guys to make sure it fit in the context of of the city and the and the plan with the staff. So anyway, this is not a rebuttal as much as a comment and appreciation for you guys thinking through the whole thing and making sure that the pumpkin patch is protected because they should be and they deserve to be. And it sounds like I think they will be. So that's all that makes me happy. And so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But just wanted to say that I think it's gone home long enough. People need to get home.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Just a quick question. What about a concern for automation in the future?
Yeah, well, I can't really control the future. So, you know, everyone has this weird perception that humans are somehow going away and we're all being replaced by robots. But I can tell you, the automation that they've put in the warehouses, not only has not decreased the amount of employees working there, it's actually increased the amount of employees and the huge investment. So obviously, people are trying to be more productive with their time and energy, right? Because we all want to be able to buy this and have it delivered to our house in one hour. And that's really hard to do if you just have human labor. And so they're using automation equipment to accelerate the ability to us do it, to do it and give you the right thing that you want. So you're not returning it back up the system. And so we don't really know what the future holds. But I can tell you the investments that we see, which is substantial within our projects, is adding to productivity, not eliminating humans. That's why they want more and more parking spots, right? It's because they're humans in there, not robots.
Supplementation. Yeah, I wouldn't, wouldn't trying to put it as a machine versus human argument. I just know you're forward, through our conversations, very forward thinking as far as building dynamics when you're going into them. So I figure you're the best person to ask. So you see it more as a supplementation than a replacement type technology?
Look, it's, it's really hard to replace the human element and the way we shop and how we, I mean, these things are very complex operations. I don't think, it's not what they used to be twenty years ago. And so the way we shop, and we didn't have iPhones until two thousand seven or something, right? So it wasn't that long ago in the context of history. And a lot has changed since then. And I think it, I think it's gotten efficient in many ways. But I think the technology is catching up to what we want. So I don't have to answer your question, but
Yeah, I mean,
we can talk offline.
The opinion was supplementation over replacement. I'm just curious. I mean, that's a, yeah, every AI movie and everything else, you know, but
Lieutenant S. Cyberdyne taking over.
But we see it in our industry, you know, everybody, just so everybody knows, I was local twelve for twenty years. And by the way, you guys must have dress vests because I don't have a single vest that's that clean at home. Or you're all office workers. But anyway, we see it with GPS. Everybody's like, oh, self automated machines. But really, it's just a supplementation for production. So yeah, just curious your opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
So I guess now we can close the public hearing then.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, and we'll close public comments and we'll move to the commissioners. Commissioners, what do we got? Let's start on the end there. Go ahead.
You go first.
Give us your roundup.
Age for Beauty. I appreciate everybody coming out. I think it was from the standpoint of taking the time out of your day to come and present to this. As a, as an architect, I obviously work with a lot of tradesmen's. And to have you guys come united as far as supporting the project and explaining how this would economically benefit you and your families, I think is important for this commission to hear as well. So again, I appreciate the time and the effort that has been put into the presentations. Obviously, the passion for the pumpkin patch is is important. And again, I appreciate representatives from all sides of this coming to this commission, spending the time to express your concerns and support of the project. So that's my, my two cents.
Okay, young lady.
So first, I want to thank the staff. You guys do an amazing job. And I hope I didn't come across any which way, but anytime, the pumpkin patch is such an icon in our community. I mean, Ucaipa is on the map because of the pumpkin patch. Let's be honest about that. They, they bring in over a million people. I mean, I mean, their outreach is, their marketing impressions are over a million, if we had those marketing impressions. As far as the tradesmen, I work in that industry and I so appreciate that. My son's actually going into the ironworkers union. So I definitely am a fan of job creation. I just want to make sure that we're not pigeonholing a local business that we all love and hold dear to our heart. And when I signed on to be on this commission, I made a commitment to my community. And it was to hear both sides of a story. It wasn't to just be on one side or the other. So please understand it is, for me, and I have so much respect for you. You are probably one of the best city planners I've ever met. And your department is a really great department. They do a good job year after year. Maria is amazing. She's got great customer service and, you know, always doing her due diligence to set things up. So I do apologize for my harshness, but it's only because they are such an icon in our community. And I just want to make sure that we protect them. And I don't want them to lose their commercial zoning. I am pretty staunch on that. So if we can come to a compromise, do a town hall meeting or whatever, where we can come up with a compromise to protect that, then I'm okay with it. I'm okay, I'm even okay with the warehousing. I just want to make sure they're okay.
Richard?
I would like to copy both my commissioners on the right. And I, I was a teamster for fifteen years before I became a contractor for the last twenty. I do like development. That's what keeps us all working and food on the table. My only concern is with these million square foot warehouses. They're big. And like Dr. Wong stated, there, there's a lot of noise, a lot of pollution. And I believe until that Wildwood Canyon exit is built, it's going to be hell on that interchange. I think the San Timoteo Canyon is going to be, there's going to be a ton of trucking through that canyon, and that's a small road. But but I I do believe in development. I I just, I I, at this point, I I think those warehouses are really, really big for that area and what we have for traffic control at this time.
Okay, Lyle?
I mean, just to appease some concerns with what I know to my fellow commissioner, that a million square footers are actually the lowest vacancy in in tilt up real estate. So, which just echoes the other concern that they're going to fill up and we'll have all those trucks that are promised. So it's a double edged sword. But, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with the development. I think they're, they're very conscientious, conscientious of what we're looking for in this town. And it's a breath of fresh air compared to some of these bonus density programs and stuff we've had cram down our throat as of late, as far as forward thinking development. So but in turn, I think there has been productive conversation from the pumpkin factory in the city. That's over twelve hours. I mean, we've had conversations that I think, like, my opinion is, even if this thing looks right, time is needed. Continuation is what I'm looking for, that I I want to mention to my fellow commissioners to just give everybody a chance to chew on this thing. That way, those productive conversations are guaranteed to continue to a settle point. And we're the last check before it goes to city council, then hoping that it looks right before it goes to city council. And I don't, I'm not saying no. But all this has got to fit with everybody involved. And I think there's a lot of moving pieces, so.
I want to thank everybody for their comments tonight, both up here on the planning commission and all the union workers and other folks. And Ben, you're not a bad planner yourself, by the way. I didn't get this until late later Friday afternoon for, there's probably very good reasons for that. And because of a packed weekend, I didn't have time to read the entire package like I usually do. And you guys know I do. So I have some concerns that that I don't even know how to ask the questions because I didn't get to read and and do everything. There's a project and I've been looking at a map. You've probably been watching me look at my phone all night. I'm looking at the Calamasa proposed project. And that's going to be another thirty six hundred living units on that side of the county line. And it looks like there's going to be a bridge or a road of some kind that will bring all of that traffic through our project that we're talking about tonight, out to either Live Oak Canyon. Once again, Wildwood is is probably ten or fifteen years out before that intersection or interchange is going to be built. So I'm concerned about how the projects across the county line will affect us over here in Ucaipa. I think that's about all I have to say right now. Those are some concerns that I have. And I know Ben's about to say, no, there's no plans for a road. But there is a spot for a road. And I believe that it will be there in the future. Whether it comes before or after the Wildwood Canyon, I don't know. So, yeah, I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about what Dr. Wong said about the fumes. But who knows? We maybe all have all electric trucks by then, you know, if we keep the same legislature. I'm not saying it'll happen. But anyway, thank you for, thank the staff. Thanks for all the time. And I did want to mention that I picked up on some subtle inconsistencies from my face to face meeting to tonight. So I need to think about that a little longer as well. Can I just say one more thing, JR?
Go ahead.
I just want to say that, you know, our job as commissioners is to be a filter for city council and to really digest and make sure that the zoning makes sense for this city. So please understand that that is truly what we are trying to do to the audience. You know, we really are trying to do our due diligence. And I want to be the best filter that I can be. So when it gets presented to city council, they have all the facts.
Okay. Well, actually, what we do here will be, we'll go to the city council as a recommendation, whatever we do, and they'll take it from there. But I think we, we all agree that we have to save or protect the pumpkin patch. And I think that zone change is, I, I'm not like the zoning at all. And I think you need to have commercial or something agricultural there, if that's what you want. But then again, a lot of the other commercial that we had on the freeway was taken away. I don't know why. And then that bridge, they're talking about building a bridge there. But yet in IR, when it, it said we didn't need it. So I don't know why you're going to build something that was, you know, recommended that we don't, we don't need it. But that's up to you guys who want to spend all that money on a bridge for, that you don't need. Reminds me of a bridge in Alaska, nowhere, huh? But I just don't think that's potential. But I don't know. I just think, you know, the map needs to be redone and a lot, some of that zoning needs to come back in. And the open space area, I think we got enough open space area. And I think it can be used, utilized a little better than what is on the map currently.
So I do want to make a few points. And it's more, I think, related to Commissioner Snodgrass's comments. You know, as part of the analysis that we did receive, or when we did the environmental analysis, we did address kind of the the air quality and other stuff. And we assessed the Mesa Verde Special Plan, which is south of the project as part of the cumulative analysis. The city council says just released their notice of appropriation of EIR for an update to that specific plan. Our staff did attend the scoping meeting. So whatever impacts that they create in addition to what we had already assessed, they're going to be on the hook for. They haven't identified that they're going to be building a road through our city for their traffic. But they better believe that we'll have some comments and 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 responses to that if they're going to have industrial traffic that they're creating going through our roads. And so that is certainly the process that we'll take forward. And so we are keeping an eye on whatever that proposal is. And then certainly, you know, I think in terms of the regional commercial, the commercial activities, you know, for even the agro-commercial tourism, has a lot of the flexibility, a lot of the similarities with the regional commercial provisions. And then the other regional commercial areas that are in the plan, which is under the Ken Robinson properties, are enhanced with it. So they're more valuable, more usable, and will provide greater flexibility for whatever those sites are compared to what the existing freeway corridor specific plan. So we're not really losing commercial activity, but kind of leveraging the different resources that are there. So but, you know, certainly, and then whatever the recommendation, if the the planning commission does kind of move forward, it sounds like a strong highlight in the council's decision related to the pumpkin patch and making sure that those interests are are met and sound like the the property owner is amenable to the the plan as a whole. And certainly with any kind of construction project, it's all the last minute details that kind of take a lot of effort. And so we've been working through that cumulatively. And so I think we're, I think the direction's been pretty clear on that from the commission.
Okay, keep in mind, I mean, the comment was made that on value of property, a commercial zoning for a property does increase the value. So that, you know, being said, so we have any motions here, gentlemen, ladies, and commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we come back next month and discuss this.
With provisions.
Continue it.
Continue this.
Can we do that, Ben?
Are we then looking to continue it to date certain? Maybe a little tight if we're trying to do it for the, the nineteenth?
Nineteenth of June?
That would probably, July third or July seventeenth would be the next other kind of planning commission and meetings.
Four or six weeks.
July third is thirty days.
I know that there's an applicant who's really hoping we have a July third planning commission meeting. I know it's the day before the Fourth of July, but we wanted to check your availability on that as well.
I have to work, so I'll be here.
What?
I won't be here on the
And I will be in Arizona.
So it looks like we're punting it to the seventeenth. And then And then, yeah, if that's the planning commission's recommendation, then we can certainly.
Yeah, it's the earliest that's not two weeks out. Even though there's been productive conversation over two days, I think time's our friend. And I'm not trying to bake this longer than it needs to, but I don't think it's baked all the way through yet. So, that's my opinion.
Yeah, the alternative could be a special meeting as well, if there's no date. It sounds like, though, just to gather, if the commission does move forward, the direction is less on the plan overall, but just the finer points for the ad tourism. So, is there general consensus on the other points? And then just the ad tourism, clarifying that, making sure that that's kind of fleshed through more.
I don't like that name. I'd like them to keep their regional commercial. Because I don't understand why they have to change it. If it's, you know, oh, let's change it to this name, it's not gonna affect them, then why not just keep what they have?
So.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, so part of it comes down to, I think, it is a pumpkin patch. It isn't, like, even if you compare the ad tourism to the regional commercial, the kind of amusement enterprise isn't set up in that, the regional commercial is set up for the ad tourism. So, the way that they operate is set up there. The other component that I think we're trying to be careful of is the land is, does include prime ad land. And so, having that agricultural element in some form avoids those, that particular thing. And so, having that there, because otherwise, then there's other elements that could come into play.
Is there a way for you to have them keep commercial, though?
Well, that was where I think changing the name and making it more clear on everything.
They'll work out those details, no? I mean, what are we gonna force something we want? The whole thing's protecting the owners' interest. So, if they're agreeable down the road, then cool, you got six weeks to figure it out. I think, yeah, work out the details, and if everybody's commendable, we'll come back and.
I agree.
Okay, so, with that, we do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second the continuation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, let's take a vote. Marie, you want to give me a call on this?
Starting with Commissioner Beck.
Aye.
Commissioner Chester.
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson.
Yes.
Commissioner Snodgrass.
No.
Commissioner Vick.
Yes.
And Chair Algauer.
Yes. So, it's continued to what date do you?
July 17th.
Yeah, if, and I would put out, I mean, if we can have a special board. I know there's a lot of people that put a lot of effort in this as far as timing and moving forward with projects. So, and I understand the construction industry and the timing of development. So, I don't know if a special board meeting or a special commission meeting is possible, but I would like that to explore. So, we don't wait till July 19th.
So, part of it is with the continuation to the date certain means that there isn't the cost associated with re-noticing for public hearing.
I see.
With it. And so, it's cleaner to have the date, then that way, anyone that was an interested party today already knows what the time is, rather than them trying to figure it out. So, if we are specifying the 17th, then it's pretty clear that anyone that's in the audience that has opinions on the project or interests and knows exactly what to follow along.
I'm sure, you know, our thought is we want to see that zoning changed somewhat to something for that pumpkin patch, whether it goes right back to commercial or you do commercial agricultural, something's gotta be done there.
To the chair. What I would suggest is, for the next meeting, is that there's a focus on what uses are before and what uses are now, rather than looking at the terminology. So, what the new specific plan says versus the current one. They, staff claims that there's not much of a difference, but to show you that you can do this with a new CUP, you can do this as of right, and those kind of things to allay any concerns you have. And they are grandfathered with the existing CUP for the existing uses. If they want to expand it into new areas, including concerts and things like that, they would have to bring that back. But if they kept it exactly the way they're allowed to do that, that runs with the land. If they sold it, the next person could do it, too. Of course, the CUP can be revoked, but I've seen that's a very difficult thing. In Redlands, they tried to revoke the CUP for Pharaoh's Lost Kingdom for years and years, about 10 years before they actually did it. So, it's a very difficult thing, and it's something that you, you or your future commissioners would have to encounter. And they'd also have to not be doing some of their conditions. If they adhere to the CUP, that will be forever.
Yeah, but the idea was that they can, they can do another event. I mean, you figure they only, with three, four months is all they got. The rest of the time, they're dead. And so, they're gonna add, they're gonna want to add some other, you know, something in there to make money to keep them going, whether it be a concert or rodeo or whatever.
Again, I want to highlight the provisions. Under the existing regional commercial does not provide that avenue for them to get there. They're grandfathered in as the farming activity and the ancillary stuff. The expansion into more variety of what they want to provide is identified through the ad, agro-commercial tourism district within that. So, even the regional commercial, them having the rides and other stuff, that isn't something that the regional commercial gets to do. So, if we're trying to protect the pumpkin patch, we're trying to make sure that the standards are a little bit more bespoke to what their needs are, rather than just a standard retail site. And so, I think, I think the direction's been given by the planning commission about trying to make sure that it is, it's not encumbered by an ad-only type of thing, but given the flexibility. But I just want to make sure it's, it's clear that just saying regional commercial, there's other pitfalls that go with that for what they want to do. And so, we want to make sure that we're tailored to their success in whatever, whatever the outcome is.
And are all CUPs presented to the planning commission? Or?
Yes.
Yeah, so if they came in for concert, we'd be the ones to approve it for the next seven months?
Yes.
Yeah. I think we're already approved.
Well, it sounds like we've, yeah, unless the prevailing votes want to call the item back up for a different decision, then.
Like I say, as long as we get a zoning to where they can't have, where they're allowed to have other events during the year.
I think it's important to clarify that the agro-tourism use, what we're really trying to do there is provide additional flexibility for the current use. It's not allowed within this, the existing land use district. And so, we're trying to give more flexibility, not less. And so, I think what Ben's proposing is, let's allow more of that commercial within that land use district or at least provide more specificity. But if they want to expand their use, it's more difficult with what they currently have. And I think that's what he's trying to clarify, but sometimes he's too smart and I'm nice and dumb.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, with that, we're done.
Don't with that one. Do we want to take a?
With this project.
With this project. Do we want to take a recess?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's for recess. Thank you.
Do 10 minutes?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, 10, 15 minutes. Ben's got the sandwiches back there for cookies and everything else for us.
Where's your hype, man?
Yeah.
If we haven't approved that zoning change and everything, what, I don't get, why we're, you know?
What?
Why are we approving the next one?
Who says we are?
Huh?
Who says we are?
Wait a minute, no, I'm talking about the last one. Number three.
Number three.
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, let this planning commission for June 5th reopen, we're back on track here.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Honorable Chairman and Planning Commission, we'll have a quick one tonight. Just kidding. Today we'll have case number twenty-two dash one-two-nine. It is the Starling Heights specific plan, which provides the development standards for a fourteen-point-seven-eight acre site for single-family residential development, which includes a tentative tract map, TTM number two-zero-three-seven-two, to formally create a one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-unit residential subdivision with associated community features, including a recreation center, an active park, a dog park, entry monuments, and detention basins. Based on that specific plan, it also includes a minor general plan amendment that is proposed to change the land use designation of the, the site shown in general plan figure CDL two, the land use map from RS twenty-M, a single residential twenty-thousand-square-foot minimum lot size, to PD, which is the planned development, with a modification to general plan figure CDL three, the land use modifications to add the Starling Heights specific plan with the applicant Rockwell Land Company on behalf of the Ukipa Village Partners. A little bit about the site, a little background, it is comprised of four lodges, which totaled at fourteen-point-seven-eight acres, located at the northeast corner of Twelfth Street and Avenue E. The current designation of the site is RS twenty-M, a single residential twenty-thousand-square-foot minimum lot size, and the site currently features singles, uh, uh, single-family residence with the accessory structures and is otherwise vacant, although it has been regularly disced for vegetation. It is generally surrounded by single-family residences to the north and south with floodway and additional single-family residences to the east and Dunlap Elementary School to the west. A little bit more about the site, it is near the following amenities: Thirteenth Street Sports Park, Dunlap Elementary School, Ukipa High School, Crafton Hills College, and leverages some of the city's prior capital improvement project and, uh, capital improvement project infrastructure to drainage and circulation that make this project viable, including the removal of the site from the FEMA floodplain and Ukipa Boulevard improvements and widening. So what is a specific plan? I initially just said see previous, but Ben said I couldn't do that, so. A specific plan is a tool for systematically implementing the general plan within all or portion of a planning area. That specific plan is to provide a tailored and nuanced approach to an area than applying a citywide zoning ordinance. And the applicant worked with the city in order to provide the, the specific plan rather than a general plan amendment for like an RM-type use, in order to give a more, what you see is what you get approach to the project. An alternate that could have yielded a very similar result would have just been a general plan amendment to a multi-residential land use district and then a small lot subdivision, which is kind of a typical way that we see some of those small lot standards get implemented, but rather than doing that, this, the applicant spent the additional time and resources to provide something that they think provides additional assurances to the planning commission, city council, and neighbors of the site. That way, no one can come in in the future and, and build a different project that's not necessarily what they're proposing, but maybe more, more simple or, or something that, you know, maybe would be less popular like an apartment project. So the, the specific plan calls out the design vision of the area, and that is to provide housing for, for young families within the area. They, they realized that there was kind of a, a lack of that within the city of Ukipa, and so highlighted the, the need for that through this project, and they wanted to create kind of an active community with several community features throughout the site and, and with respect to the neighboring residents surrounding the project. They also had a strong emphasis on incorporating native plants throughout the site for, for biodiversity and, and just to kind of tie in with the surrounding context of the site. Some of the key elements for this project, again, the, the stated objective is to develop a project that's attainable for young families, and a housing type that isn't demand in the city of Ukipa. It has tailored standards for the project with context for the surrounding area, including a, a strong emphasis on the perimeter edges with, with strong landscaping instead of rear yard walls or, or a perimeter block wall at property line. It includes a, a plethora of recreational amenities for residents and is developed to single-family development with smaller lot standards. Additional restrictions that are not within the Ukipa Development Code include a lower minimum height. It's reduced from thirty-five feet to thirty feet. Actually, the tallest building that they're proposing is twenty-eight feet, one inch. With layout requirements that, that provide a little bit more shielding for any parking. And lastly, a prohibition on SB nine where allowable by state law. The density is, is comparable to other projects within the vicinity of this project, including about a block to the north. So the general plan amendment would encompass the entire fourteen-point-seven-eight acres and would, like I said earlier, change that from an RS twenty-M to a planned development land use designation. That, that change in land use designation is to be consistent with state law requirements found in AB eight-twenty-one, which requires consistency between city general plan maps. The tentative tract map, number two-zero-seven-three-two, is designed per that proposed specific plan, the Sterling Heights specific plan. It is a one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-unit single-family residential project with areas designated for detention basins, amenities, and internal trails. It's proposed to be a phased project built across fifteen phases with approximately eight units per phase. And as a, as a part of that project, it'll require infrastructure improvements, including the perimeter curb gutter and sidewalk, as well as the undergrounding of ten utility poles. The drainage of the site typically flows in its existing state from north to south, and so the site is leveraging that existing drainage, as well as some of the improvements that the city has done to have two drainage basins at the southeast and southwest corners of the project. And again, that previous FEMA flood zone designation that, that made this project, that would have made this project impossible was removed, given infrastructure improvements constructed by the city and, and does kind of reap some benefit to those improvements as it would provide a greater taxable value per acre and, and really takes land that was unusable before and, and leverages it to be a, an exciting project. The amenities here, as proposed by the applicant, include an open lawn, play area, a dog park, benches, picnic tables with a shade structure, barbecue areas with charcoal grills, tot lot, a bocce ball court, cornhole courts, ping pong tables, game tables, a fire pit, outdoor dining tables, and internal connecting sidewalks, including sidewalk that connects to the trail that is along Wilson Creek, as well as landscaped detention basins that maintain in, uh, the historic flows of the site and enhanced entry features for this project. The circulation, the general circulation is shown here, there's kind of a, a loop that goes through the, the project with ingress and egress both on Twelfth Street and Avenue E. There's a minimum twenty-four-foot drive aisle throughout the project that allows for two-way traffic, but it's not so wide that you see people moving very quickly through the site. It also includes, again, internal walking path for pedestrian connectivity with additional connection to the existing trail adjacent to the site and to all site amenities. As a part of this project, the applicant is providing architecture that, that corresponds with the requirements of their specific plan. There's three specific housing types that are provided with between nine, uh, one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty square feet and two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-four square feet. Each of them is a two-story floor plan that leverages, or that uses a farmhouse architectural style with simple two-story forms accented with, with forward and side-facing gables and asymmetric proportions, kind of typical to farmhouse-type style. The units will also feature a variety of roof designs, so you don't have a super boxy-type development, and those designs also feature prominent gables consistent with farmhouse architecture. Throughout, it, it will use earth-colored stucco with vertical battens and horizontal wood siding with a garage that's kind of tucked back, and it's not the leading edge of the project or of, of the units. There are enhanced elevations that are provided for each of the kind of rear or side-facing units that are, that are kind of located adjacent to a streeter that's got visibility from the street. And there are eight color and material palettes with compliment, complimentary palettes that feature those light earth tones. So here's plan one, kind of in the top there, you've got the three different elevation types. And then here's the one-A, which is the, the kind of lighter. I tried to show all three of them through the three different models. And then here's that enhanced ride elevation. This is the one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot floor plan that does feature a three-bedroom, two-bathroom floor plan with the attached two-car garage. This model has a twenty-seven-foot, six-inch peak height. Here's the plan two. Kind of similarly, we've got the three different front elevations and then kind of a highlight of all three elevation, all four elevations for the type three. And then that's the rear elevation that's enhanced there. This is a two-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-two-square-foot floor plan that has a four-bedroom, three-point-five bathroom layout with that attached two-car garage and a twenty-eight-foot, one-inch peak height. The type three, again, we, we've got all three elevations in the top. The rear elevation that is enhanced, twenty-seven-foot, four-inch peak height and a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath floor plan. The conceptual landscaping has a strong emphasis on the perimeter plantings of the site, including along the edges of the project and between kind of the neighboring uses, which includes additional landscaped buffers. It's got a mix of ornamental trees and shrubs with typical front yard landscaping and flowering plants for kind of pops of color throughout, which is ultimately to be reviewed by the city's landscape architects during construction for consistency with the water efficiency standards that we'll have to meet. So I'll go a little bit into some of the edge conditions on this project. Here we have the north edge, which is the top. I know it's kind of tough to see up there, but it does feature an eighteen-foot landscaped buffer with a six-foot block wall in between that and the northern use, which is the other single-family residential land use. The east edge, shown at the bottom, includes a masonry wall with a variable width, but approximately eight-foot landscape slope. Here are the two that are adjacent to the street, and I think this is where the, the project has really done its best to, you know, be courteous to its neighbors, and the southern edge, which is the top here, that's along Twelfth Street and features a landscape buffer with a block wall and then additional landscaping for the internal trail that provides a roughly twenty-eight-foot buffer before even any of the yards start for the, the residences that are there. The west edge, which is shown at the bottom, includes a landscaped slope along Avenue E and provides approximately sixteen feet of landscaping with a, a block wall in there as well. So these are the typical internal conditions. They'll have a long internal streets. They'll include block wall with landscaped front and side yards in order to, to provide some of the, that nice look. Here's the entry statement that they're proposing. Starling Heights with the channel lettering, entry pavers, and then it's, it's gated as well. And now those gates provide enough for a car to pull in, so that they're not hanging out on the road. The wall and fence plan is shown here includes the decorative gates and walls along the project. Again, it's really hard to see up there, but the perimeter of the site will feature a masonry wall that's stuck with a stucco finish and decorative pilasters. The internal drive aisles for the site just have the, the masonry wall, and then in between the actual units is going to be a vinyl fence. As a part of the environmental review for this project, the city's on-call consultant completed a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration in compliance with the CECL requirements and determined that all impacts could be mitigated to a less than significant impact. No comments were received during the public review period, but there are some notable measures, including a biological survey during nesting bird season, measures to reduce noise and vibration, and measures if there is the inadvertent discovery of human remains or any other paleontological artifacts. As a part of the, the project, public notices were sent to all property owners within three-hundred feet of the project, and several responses were received from, it's actually seven unique parties now, with commenting, comments identifying issues concerning traffic, safety for students at the adjacent school, given the new units, the fit of the project within the surrounding area, as well as the potential loss of views with the development of the project, and then light conditions or, or potential section-eight housing that could be developed. I think that was prior to actually maybe seeing the project plans. An additional comment was received from the project engineer thanking the city for, for our efforts and hopes for the ultimate success of the project that was provided. Another letter was received from the Ukipa Calamasa School District identifying the availability of space in their classrooms and opportunities for more families. And then there were actually two more letters that were received after this presentation was made and they're available for the planning commission, one in support of the project, again, from a member of the project team, and then a, a member, a non-neighbor, but a resident of Ukipa who had concerns about the development. Additional public outreach. There were two newspaper notices that were provided in the Yucapacalamasa, or in the Yucapa news mirror for this project. The first inviting comment for the mitigated negative declaration, or with the, second noticing the date and time of this meeting. We didn't have any responses that were received as a part of that. Additionally, the city did conduct tribal consultation, and in response, the project consulted, conducted an extended Phase One archaeological testing and found no resources. The project proponent held an additional community outreach meeting, which was attended by approximately ten people, with topics, again, concerning traffic, the safety and fit of the project. Here are some of the site photos. Those poles shown here are gonna have to be undergrounded. Some additional site photos. And so we have two different recommendations here. One, if the planning commission is in support of the Starling Heights specific plan, and one, if the planning commission chooses not to support the Starling Heights specific plan. Ultimately, this is going to be reviewed by the city council. That concludes my presentation. I'm here if you guys have questions. I think the applicant's still here if he didn't fall asleep, but.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody have any questions?
If I was reading it correctly, it, does it show that it's only four feet between houses?
So it's, it's eight feet between houses, but it's a kind of four-foot typical side yard, yeah.
Oh, okay. If you had to compare it to another project, would you think that, like, the project that's on Seventh Street would be comparable to this type of a project? You know, the one that's over by KFC, there's like a small development? I'm just, in my mind, I was just trying to figure out which community mirrored.
In, in working on this project, the one that most closely mirrors it and that I've done some inspections for is Artisan. It's on Seventeenth Street in Yucipa. It, it's kind of by the, the Yucapa Point project, but kind of utilizes a similar kind of six-pack, smaller yards, but that, that's a project that utilized the RM development with small lot subdivision standards. Very similar to this project, but again, the specificity that's provided by a specific plan does kind of differ the two.
Is it? How many, the, the fenster putting up the block wall? How many sides is that on? Are there only three sides?
I believe it's on the perimeter of the site. They, they also have that within. Have that here. And I know it, it's really tough to see up there, especially when it's kind of white on how bright it is. But yeah, I, I believe it's, it is the perimeter of the site, and then within the internal drive aisles, you'll, you'll also see that.
Yeah.
One thing to note, too, in terms of the block walls along the perimeter, along the streets, the block wall isn't directly adjacent to the, the street. It's landscaping first and then the block wall behind it, so you're not, you're not having a bunch of graffiti attracting stuff. You actually have landscaping lines on the wall instead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm good. Is the applicant here?
You hear William?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, William.
Okay, great, great. Chair, Chair Algoor, Vice Chair Hicks, Commissioners. My name is William Rockwell Ingram, project applicant, president of Rockwell Land Company. I'm remiss, I couldn't be there with you tonight. I had a, a personal situation come up, and I appreciate Nick and the IT team accommodating my needs. Thank you very much, Christian, for, for the presentation. I thought you did a great job highpointing, you know, some of our, our core focuses throughout this process. I'll tell you, we've been at it for about two and a half years. Part of our, our initial approach was, was speaking with our council member, who, who's the representative in our district, and he raised a number of concerns for us, which led us into proposing this specific plan. You know, the, the initial concern was, was, was density. I think the current concern is density, and, and we tried to do everything in our power to, to mitigate that. And, and I think Christian did a great job of highlighting it. But that was one of the reasons why we chose a specific plan. I prepared a little statement for you, I'll read it off to you. I don't have a, a long presentation for you, but I am available for questions after, should you have any. So the, 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 the specific plan, the importance and its function, detailing its role in the guiding development standards within the designated area while aligning with broader goals of the general plan, emphasis on providing a tailored guidance to future end-users while ensuring consistency with the citywide land use policies. Our proposed project aims to address housing needs in Yucipa, particularly, as Christian mentioned, for young professionals and families through a specific plan approach rather than a blanket general plan amendment. This approach offers clarity and specificity in the development standards, fostering certainty for stakeholders and authorities. As Christian mentioned, the thorough consistency analysis was done and demonstrated on how the project aligns with roughly twenty general plan policies that are in your current general plan that emphasize housing diversity, architectural design, environmental sustainability, and community amenities. I think something that's come into clear focus for us as, as the process has, has gone along was, was issues in the housing element being brought to the forefront along with budget issues within the city of Yucipa. And, you know, I'll, I'll notate that part of the package, you know, Christian notates two and a half million or so dollars being generated in fees by the project. And I went back and looked, and each, each house garners sixty-two thousand dollars per, per door in fees, or roughly eight million dollars of immediate revenue for the city of Yucipa. And we're really happy to, to be in a position to, to request your approval. And, and we're really, really eager to move forward and, and get our final engineering processed, our construction documents going, and this community built. You know, we've taken great care and time in, in ensuring that the development is something that we all can be proud of, especially our neighbors and current residents of Yucipa. So with that being said, you know, I respectfully ask for your approval, Commission, and I thank you for your time and your, and, and your patience.
Anyone have any questions for?
I have a quick question. What, what is the average lot size? I don't have any of the paperwork in front of me.
It's, it's roughly three, three thousand, I think.
Yeah, so as a point, so the density is kind of comparable to kind of small lot projects that have been done in the RMs, so the condo projects, as, as Commissioner Chester noted, or kind of the response of, you know, the Artisan and other kind of projects are kind of at the same density, kind of following that. Another one that's probably similar, but higher density, and my first house as an adult is the Cedar Glen neighborhood, but that one was quite a bit higher density and, but similar kind of thing where you're as, you know, a person don't have to maintain a whole bunch of yard for it, but still have space, and so.
Wow, you have anything? Hey, you have anything, Peg? No?
I'll, I'll reserve my comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're good there.
Thank you.
All right, so then we can call up public comment speaker list.
First, we have Mike Simpson.
Sorry, sorry, just really quick. If you wouldn't mind hanging out, William, we're, we're gonna provide a chance for rebuttal after this as well.
No problem, thank you.
Hello, Commission, thank you for listening. I'm a resident, I live directly behind Wilson Creek, right there. My wife and I, we lived there for fifteen years. There were several of my neighbors here, but it looks like they left at the intermission. It's pretty simple. Hundred and twenty-seven houses on fifteen acres. A four-foot front yard, eight feet apart, in Dunlap Acres. I live on horse property, so do all my neighbors. All those lots at the top there, there's donkeys right there, horses on their property. These people down on the bottom have a big giant lot. And on top of that, it's right next to a school with two hundred more cars. I mean, you saw in that, even the photo that he took was a school day. All cars parked on the side of the road. With that said, I just don't see how this project fits in our neighborhood, and I hope that people won't approve it. And it's just little tiny shoebox houses that I have to now stare out at the back of my yard, and they get to all stare into my yard. In my opinion, that just doesn't fit in this particular community. I do know this developer, when you've gone to Costco and you get off and you see those houses that are on top of the freeway and this far apart, it's the, the same developer. Lot of traffic, kids, right next to all these extra houses. Yes, it's gated, yes, they have public spaces, but they have to have all those because they have no yard. I mean, eight feet, you walk out your front door, and there's your neighbor right there. I don't see how that fits in our particular neighborhood. I guess that's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Jillian Simpson.
Just state your name and address for our records, please.
My name is Jillian Simpson, and you said you named my address?
Yes.
One-two-three-six-six Cambria Drive, Yucipa.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am in opposition of this project for various reasons. The city's goals for this year were to improve our roads and also to increase housing while keeping the rural city feel. This housing directly cancels out those goals. Two hundred, three hundred more cars on the road that are already not maintained in that area well. The rural feel is gone. I grew up in Lake Arrowhead, it was a very hard decision to leave that area, and I chose Yucipa because it is what most matched that type of living. That is, that's why I'm here, is for the rural feel. For equestrians who ride the trails there, I feel you're putting them in direct danger. And myself, as an equestrian, with the housing, the increased people, the dogs that are gonna be right on that trail barking at you, the livestock that lives immediately on that property as well, it will be a major disturbance to them. The kids at the school across the street increasing the traffic, that's an elementary school. You're increasing the traffic drastically in those areas, and I don't feel that that is safe for them as well. That's about all that I have for you tonight. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Brian Taylor.
Again, if you could just state your name and address as far as for the records.
My name's Brian Taylor, my address is one-three-zero Irvine, California, or one-three-zero Messenger, Irvine, California. I just wanted to express my support for this project and hopes that the Planning Commission will approve this project. It is extremely difficult for first-time homebuyers that are looking like myself in this area and this part of the county to find a new home that is affordable, and communities like this do provide that, seeing that they're not, you know, three thousand square foot homes on seventy-two-hundred square foot lots that do request a lot of money to be able to buy. So with that, I hope Planning Commission approves, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Hanson Wong.
I'll save you time, they very expressed what I thought, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just heard how to turn this on and you. Get back up here.
Finally figured out how to work it, you.
You have to actually put minutes in there before you can.
Okay, Marie.
That was the last of our public speakers.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll move to the Commissioners. Oh, you don't need a rebuttal, you wanna go to rebuttal?
If the applicant representative has any last comments based on the public comments, William, you can do so, if not, we can go to the Commissioners.
Yeah, just, just quickly or briefly, I appreciate all the speakers and their comments. To, to give you, I guess, a glimpse into our mindset, it, it was, it was centered around affordability. Like the last speaker commented, you know, RM ten, RM eight, buil, building, building houses within those, the provisions in those zoning designations is really cost prohibitive, and it locks out lots and lots of people. And really, if you look at the market data of the existing communities that are selling right now in Yucipa, the one that's struggling the most is the one that is on seventy-two-hundred square foot lots with twenty-five to thirty-two-hundred-foot homes being sold, because they're too expensive. No one can afford them. So our, our plan has really been elevated by the recent raise in rates. You know, certainly wasn't what we thought, what, what we thought was gonna happen when we started, but, but at this point today, it makes that affordability claim even that much more stronger. And that's what we were thinking. It wasn't, we weren't trying to harm animals or put more cars on the road to hurt kids. It was really a play, a play to, to, to add some options and some stock for housing. So that's it.
Okay, now you can close the public hearing.
Okay.
I have a question.
Hold on.
Close it?
Donna, Commissioner Snodgrass noted she had a question for the applicant.
You were talking about affordability, what do you expect to sell these homes for?
I thought that might come up. We're, we're projecting in, in the five hundreds right now. You know, the, the market will set the price, truly, but that's where we think it, it will be right at this moment.
And why did you choose this many houses on, on those parcels?
Well, specifically because the city did CIP improvements along Wilson Creek, which unlocked value for the existing owners. They were willing participants, and, you know, with Crafton Hills so close to us and the Civic Center so close, this site is, is an amazing site. We really, really like it. And I think, you know, too, the school district has recognized the need for additional housing here in the community. And, you know, we graciously accepted their letter of support, and so that's primarily the reason why.
And you mentioned you had a conversation with the district city councilman. What, what was his remarks?
Oh, you, you know, the remarks were largely centered around density and feel and fit. And so, you know, that's why we chose a specific plan, so that we could set up the, the standards that would be locked in, locked in stone, if you will, while, while the entitlement is approved or, or if it is approved. And, and that's why we chose to really soften that edge on Avenue E by setting back twenty-eight feet. We also chose not to go to the allowable height, the existing height limit at thirty-five, so that we could preserve the mountain views for the folks to the south of us. And so, yeah, that, that was largely what the discussion was about, and, and that was.
You, you didn't exactly answer the question, but is, was he in favor of, of the changes and, and how it's drawn?
You know, I haven't circled back with Chris since he gave me his feedback in terms of what I should be aware of. He, he lives in the general vicinity, so I think he's very in tune with, you know, what, what I might be facing. But, you know, I took all of his advice into consideration. So I, I'm not sure what, what his stance is today.
Okay, is there any possibility of you reducing the number of homes?
At, at this point, no. You know, we, we've looked at, we've looked at a bunch of alternatives, alternative scenarios. Is there any point I could get my fees reduced from sixty-two thousand dollars a door?
So I think in terms of the overall distortion, especially when it comes to the city council decision, that would probably be best left for them to, to, to weigh in on that. Wanted to kind of note, just in terms of the density, so the city had approved a...
Um, wanna kind of note just in terms of the density, so the city had approved a kind of a, a rezone. Um, in prior years kind of nearby. And so the density yield is, this is comparable to that, so. Um, but again, as, as the applicant noted, um, this one in this case is set up as. Single family lots, whereas other one could be built with apartments or some other type of multifamily structure.
And that's a question I had for you. Could this be rezoned to RL twenty-four?
Uh, they'd have to go through a whole separate process for that, yes.
But could it?
Any property, I mean, in theory could do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think I missed it. Are, is this going to be gated?
Yes, it will.
It is, it is, yeah.
Okay, gated and locked and that's good, that's good. Um, okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything while you're still here?
Just from a standpoint of traffic and obviously there's some concern with the existing Dunlap Elementary to the, to the, to the west. Um, obviously improving this, I mean, we're going to be improving roads, putting in sidewalks, curbs, gutters. Um, I, I have done a couple of career days at Dunlap Elementary School and obviously peak time, I think, for drop off. Uh, what is, does anybody know that it's like nine o'clock or something for the students? Uh, cause that's when the traffic really hits. And every, every elementary school has that dynamic and pickups around three, so. Uh, I'm not sure, you know, obviously adding two hundred cars and with this type of community and young professionals, they would probably. Be far at work before, before school even uh starts during the day. Uh, but I see obviously some benefits from the standpoint of sidewalks, curbs and gutters. There's a lot of. Uh, parents that drop off their kids across the street and walk across the street, so see some of that improvement being a benefit to that area, so. There's some of my observations.
Okay. Okay, I think we're done with the applicant. Nobody else have questions for the applicant? Nope. Okay, we're done with the applicant. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. No, thank you. I, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll close public hearing and then we'll move to our commissioners. And we'll start at the end. And I'm looking at you.
That again? I, I'm, I'm actually a big proponent of these kind of infill projects. I think they provide the housing that this community is looking for. Um, I think the applicant has done a good job as an architect. I think they've done some variety on the. Aesthetics of the buildings and given some different options to that, so I think it's a creative use of the land as far as just the. I'm not sure I want to live eight foot from a neighbor, but a lot of young families and a lot of startup families are looking for the ability to buy a house, so. I think from the standpoint of the layout and the landscaping and the treatments of that, I think it's well done.
When I was looking at the project, I was looking at the ingress and egress and I was a little concerned about the number of houses in that community. Especially in such close proximity to Dunlap. Um, so that's just one of the concerns that I have was. Was that.
Okay, Richard.
I think I'm in complete opposition of Commissioner Higgins when it comes to uh. Housing. I, I do not believe in the high density, high housing or, or anything at all. I, uh. Yeah, I'm, yeah.
You're good.
Yeah, that's it. I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Lyle, what do you have?
I think mine just comes from palate fatigue from having these high density general plan amendment, just. Day after day cram down our throats. It's like, uh, um. It's like, uh, shoot for the stars and then if you get it, go through cool. If not, then you recede. And it just, it becomes a lot. I was just doing a quick calculation here if, uh. If these are for starter families, um, what's the mortgage on five hundred thousand right now at seven percent? Is, uh, yeah, three grand, three to four grand plus utilities. And the, the mean income for the city of Ucaip is what seventy-five thousand, seventy-eight thousand? What is the? What is the?
Plus mortgage insurance.
Yeah, so if they're coming in at three percent, yeah, like keep adding it up. Um, so the, the. Proclamation that this is for starter families doesn't, I mean, all the math flies right in the face of that in a current economy, so. Um, yeah, it just doesn't, it's not, it's something I'm uh interested in entertaining right now, I guess. It's just, uh. Yeah, I think the average, the gross income before taxes is about fifty-four hundred, so. If eighty percent of your income for the, the family goes to your mortgage, you're kind of. Up, uh, up creek without a paddle, so I don't see it.
Hey, you're up.
Hey, I'm just gonna be blunt. I think this is a hot mess. Um, it's in the wrong place. It's too dense. The architecture is extremely boring to me, unlike. Yeah, Dave and I, we just have different opinions on, I think architects are, are losing their imagination. That's just the bottom line there, so. Um, I can't wrap my brain around this particular project. I think we can do better. I don't. I would vote yes to build something there, but um I think we can do better than this.
Okay, with that, we need a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, you get that?
The recommendation for city council to.
Yes.
Oh, okay. We have a second? Okay, so it dies for lack of a second. So, um, let's try again. Somebody have another motion to make? Okay, so.
So I guess.
What do you do, Ben?
Well, I think to some degree, maybe some clarity for the applicant may be helpful. I know, uh, Commissioner Snodgrass, you mentioned that. We could do better, um, perhaps some guidance for them on what that element is. Um, maybe helpful, at least in terms of their decision-making process. Um, and then kind of going from there. And then certainly, you know, specific kind of findings that you guys are, um. Are, are having concern with and then that way it's pretty clear on, for the city council on what, what it is. That's at odds.
I think the density, it's a density issue for that area because there is such ru- rural character specifically in the Dunlap area. I think that's the concern. I don't want to speak on behalf of my colleagues here, but I would say that that's one of the biggest proponents for me. Is I do think the density in that area, it does conflict with the rural character that it currently is.
But we've approved similar projects for the Dunlap Acres area.
Yeah, so, and I think that's one thing that maybe is, is something to keep in mind. So the RM or the eight point seven units per acre. Which is, this is comparable to, is allowed kind of a stone's throw from the site. Um, the other component for the existing kind of components, Dunlap Acres was historically in the floodplain. And was also subject to restrictions with regional water product control board because there wasn't sewer infrastructure. So the fact that there is a little bit more of a rusted vibe to existing properties in the area. Does not necessarily reflect that that is what the, the, the future lies because those infrastructure or those impediments. Have been resolved or, you know, uh, accommodated through significant public investment through both the city, the water district and other respective agencies. And so, um, just something to, to keep in mind that, um, that some of the large lots, you know, certainly if they do have MLRA's in, can, can you to do so. Um, but that isn't necessarily a reflection of that was what it was always supposed to be, but just a hindrance that was in place because of. Of other issues that have since been resolved. So I just want to um add that context in as well.
Did this have an HOA? I forgot to ask that question.
Yeah, they would have a HOA to help manage the common space.
So on top of the cost of over five hundred thousand dollars, now you have an HOA fee on top of that?
Yeah, so there would be that, certainly if, if we're trying to get lower costs, then in that case, the density would need to be higher. Um, and so i- if, if that's what we're uh concerned about, then it would be recommending higher density versus less. To hit a, a certain price point.
Yeah, so as a, as a young person, I do have a unique experience of being a renter and looking at the housing market right now. I, I would say that's pretty reflective of. Something that I, I would actually consider affordable for an approximately two thousand square foot home.
Yeah, but if you're of the, if you're of the median income at seventy, or household income of Yucaip at eighty-five thousand. Your, your bring home after taxes is just shy of five thousand and your mortgage before PMI if you come in at three percent, so. I, I, I get what you're saying, but the, the, what he's saying is um affordable housing or entry level housing. Is for who, you know? I mean, y- you gotta make a hundred and fifty a year as a couple. That's not a twenty-one year old.
So I think that's where the distinction kind of lies is, is not necessarily affordable housing, given that that has its own separate stuff. More attainable housing. Um, I would definitely agree that the cost of housing has gotten.
It's maniacal.
Pretty difficult. Um, so, and I'll kind of preface this. Um, I used to live in the Cedar Valley neighborhood. I loved my house. Um, had great view, had good yard. Um, happy with my house now too, but that, when I bought it, it was, I was in the first phase, so it was three hundred and twenty-eight. Three twenty-eight was what the, the sale price was. Um, as a young professional, what I sold it for. If I was back in my shoes when I bought it, I wouldn't have been able to afford it. And so it's one of those like just sad realities of, of things evolving, but. That neighborhood itself, um, uh, I'm still close to it, so I'm not that far from the neighborhood and still have friends there, but. Just something to, to keep in mind, but yeah, the, the cost of housing has just been, just insane, especially for what. People can actually do and some, something has to change on that, so.
When was the Artisan Project approved? Christian, do you know that?
The Artisan Project, the initial approval, I think was back in two thousand. Belkirk Gardens?
I think it was prior to the Great Recession and then it was down and then they.
The Greer Session. Yeah, I guess I, I'll reemphasize my point. I mean, whether we're looking at medium income for. Uh, citizens of Yucaipa or we're looking at other people wanting to move to Yucaipa because of its attractiveness and its home feel and whatever else. So I'm not necessarily saying that everybody in Yucaipa is going to be buying these homes. So from the standpoint of affordability and, and all that, that's, that's means that the applicant has obviously done some due diligence. And looking at the economic viability of this project, otherwise he wouldn't be doing it. So I guess that's part of my rationale for looking at it from the standpoint of whether it's affordable or not. It's obviously providing housing. In a community where we don't have enough housing. And so I also look at the fact that we have granted this to. Another developer, even though this is a different commission, whether we do it or not or we vote for it, I don't want to be. Uh, discriminatory saying we approved it for somebody else, but we're not going to approve it for you. So that's just my position on it, so. And I do like the architecture, so.
We got all the comments. You got them all?
What about playing around with reducing the square footage of the houses?
To do a little bit smaller units?
Yeah, like eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet.
That, that's approximately where they are. They're nineteen, twenty to twenty-three.
I think they, they consider the garage in that square footage, Donna, I think, so. I'm not sure.
My first house was eight hundred square feet.
Seven fifty and you don't even have to come back. You know, it's.
Okay, all right, can we move to our next one then?
Um, well, are we just? Yeah, we have to make a recommendation on it or feedback. I mean, if it's architecture and just having more. Variety than that can be part of the recommendation. If it's that, we don't want this because of another reason and the certain findings, we can do that too, but. We have to have some sort of direction for city council as they weigh the, the final outcome.
We have, we have, so we didn't pass it, so.
You can on, on denying the general plan amendment, right?
Yeah, and providing the finding for, for why that is. Um, yeah.
Hear what you said, I'm sorry.
So you asked if you could deny it outright. I said you can by disallowing the general plan amendment, but giving your reason why.
So do we have something?
Well, I mean, you can deny it, you can deny it based on it being inconsistent with the land use designation.
What they're looking for is something that they can take back to city council that what we want to see happen to that. Is track and make it work.
So make it consistent with the current land use designation.
Do what?
Make it consistent with the current land use designation. So one of the issues is it is not. Can, it's inconsistent with the land use designation of the existent land use district.
Okay, I agree with that one. Everybody else?
Did you second it?
Well, we're already taking a vote on that project. We're just trying to give feedback right to you, Ben.
No, we need a formal motion and vote on, on that. W- we just need the record to be clear. We, we, we have to have. You need to provide a recommendation for denial for the findings, so it sounds like Stacy has made or Commissioner Chester has made. The motion, someone has to second it and then you guys vote on it and then that.
Currently it's twenty M, correct?
Yes.
So your motion is to keep the current land use designation?
My motion is to deny the tentative track map as it is inconsistent with the land use designation of the project.
I'll second it.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, or your motion, you got a second?
So we need a vote. Well, we need a vote as well, so.
Guess what?
We need a vote as well, so we have a motion and a second. We need a vote.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed?
Opposed.
Done. One, ooh.
The guy at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look down there.
No.
Too, too long. Okay, we got your vote?
Yep, okay, so now we have item number three.
Um, there's number three, right?
There's another one?
There's another. Yeah, there's one more.
It's a general plan safety element.
So it's another general plan amendment, but it's fairly simple. Are we all ready?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna open the public hearing for item number three?
Yeah, item number three is, um, that is, oh.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, chairman and commissioners before you is the safety element update um to the city's general plan. Um, kind of as a hierarchy, general plan establishes a long-term vision of how a community grows. Um, and there is seven required elements that are part of what should comprise a general plan, one of them being a safety element. Um, as part of the safety element, there's a number of provisions that apply, including those related to fire safety. And different state laws that have come into effect. Um, the city's safety element was last updated as part of the comprehensive general plan update in twenty sixteen. Um, state law specifies that as we update um our housing element, we also then have to then go back through and update our safety element. So that's why this item is coming before you tonight. Um, as part of that, uh, since twenty sixteen, a few different updates to state laws have occurred. That need to be included in the safety element, so that has been made. Um, in the agenda packet includes both. The clean version as well as the track change version to show the changes. There really isn't necessarily a whole lot of, of, of drastic changes. It really is to meet those updated state laws and set the policy and then certainly the funding, um, kind of prioritizing. Future funding for fire department resources, given the cost of public safety as it's gone up. Um, as part of the safety element, it does have to be reviewed by uh the Board of Forestry and so that was done. The Board of Forestry. Uh, had no recommendations or changes that we needed to make and so they've given their green light and so. Given we've done that, um, it's requested tonight for planning commission recommendation to city council. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so. What do we need?
So just like any public hearing, um, if there's any questions for me, we can start there and then if we have any public comments, uh, speech slips, then we can do that. And then back to commission.
Okay.
When did the Board of Forestry review it again?
Um, I put the date, it was, uh, April ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
So it was fairly recently. Also do want to give a plug, um, to, uh, Cal Fire, um. Uh, Brian Olson, who is with the land use planning. Um, he was kind of our technical advisor and very helpful. Um, um, with us to be successful with the first review with the Board of Forestry, so. with the first review with the Board of Forestry, so.
Wasn't he an O2 graduate here, too?
I don't remember, I think so, but his customer service and support from Cal Fire was top-notch. And so I've related to his superiors as well, but just want to note the great work he did.
Yes, he is a class of O2.
It's like a steel trap in there.
Okay, so do we get a motion?
I just have one quick question. Is the geologic hazard overlay district, is that, that's new?
No, that's been in place. So that, we're not making any changes with that, but that corresponds to the areas of like kind of liquefaction where there could be risks with kind of the settlement of land as well as the aquasprillo fault zone maps from the state, which relate to fault zone hazards.
Are any of like the mudslide areas included in this new safety plan?
No, so all those geotechnical areas are not being modified whatsoever. So really, part of it is the identification of the high, very high fire hazard severity zones and updating the terminology there. And then also kind of assessment of neighborhoods that are within those areas and the ability for two-way access. And so mapping that out. And so we're in the process of doing that right now in order to meet that and then setting the policies. And then the last component is the alignment. When we did our original safety element, we had done our hazard mediation, local hazard mediation plan. We have since updated because it has to be updated every five years. And so this provides just a reference to whatever the current hazard mediation plan were consistent. So then that way, we're not having to update this on a schedule that doesn't make sense, so. That's it.
Well, I think this is good for the city to continue to protect Ucaipa residents from the various, and identifying the various hazards within the city. So I think this is a good plan.
It's a good document.
I make a motion to approve.
Just as a quick note, no public comment, speech or slips on this.
Sorry.
So we can close the public hearing.
Is any, no public comments? Okay, we're closing the public hearing. And then we'll go to the, we have a motion on the floor. Oh, we got a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, Jess.
I want to go home.
Aye.
All right, in terms of announcements before we leave, I know we had mentioned earlier about July 3 for a Plan Commission. I know Commissioner Snodgrass knows she's not available. Wanted to double check if anyone else knows they won't be available, then that way we can coordinate with that one applicant.
Yeah, I will not be available.
Okay.
I'll be here.
I'll be here. I'll be here until 7:00 AM the next morning.
So, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a chair and, or we'll have a corner, but we don't have a chair or a vice chair right now, so.
You got the new vice chair, and that's up to John Thorpe, so.
So we'll go from there.
I think on the next agenda, we'll agendize a vice chair. And then as to the absence, that is indeed up to city council.
Okay.
Is it specifically up to Thorpe since Hicks was Thorpe's appointee?
Yes.
Or is it a consensus with the council?
So if it was originally council member Thorpe's appointee, then yes, it would be, he would make the motion, and then the rest of the city council would concur with his recommendation. Yep.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
So I may ask, just for reference off the record, can John reappoint him?
You're not leaving.
What I'd suggest is that it's not on the agenda discussed.
Is what?
It's not on the agenda for us to distress. And certainly, whatever, whatever the city council wants to do with a Plan Commission is their progress, so.
I was just curious. Okay, I say a word adjourned.
But I just learned how to do this, so let's do something else.
Wait, man, we can't go, she just learned how to do this.
Well, you can stay and play with it.
Oh.
Oh, wow. I missed one step every time. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Leave the trash, you'll come and get it.